Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is a City of Laredo Special City Council Meeting. And this is the Toma Guidelines. The five-way link at the Laredo Center Quagmire dot com dot I R A. And of course, this is a special city council meeting for the City of Laredo. Uh, here in Laredo, Texas, we're here physically at eleven twenty East, Cheltenham Road. June, March thirty first, twenty twenty. And it's five thirty three P M. And no back, please join us in the pledge of allegiance to those that are here. And those that won't take also join us at one and then a moment of silence. I'd like to lead you to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence for any particular testimony there. If there's a big difference for the coronavirus, the novel coronavirus, oh, appropriate. Thank you so much. How can we have a roll call of the City Secretary?
Mayor Pete Sines.
Pat.
Councilmember Rudy Gonzalez Jr.
Eric.
Councilmember Vidal Rodriguez.
Hi.
Councilmember Mercurio Martinez. Mayor Pro Tem. Alberto Torres Jr.
Frank.
Councilmember Norma Nelly Vielma. Councilmember Dr. Marte Martinez.
Here, here.
Here, here.
Councilmember George Se- Ockel. Councilmember Robert De Bay.
I can be a website.
Mayor Yellicore.
Thank you, Mr. City Secretary. We do have forums proceeding forward. The next section is citizen comment. Again, given the circumstances we had, we had for people to make comments or questions. The evidence. So, Mr. City Secretary, would you read the comments?
Yes, Mayor, there's about four public comments. The first one is the Onicio Gonzalez de Castilla. His comment is, "Due to the President Trump's announcement of Social Distancing Act, extension date of April thirtieth, twenty twenty, our industry is concerned about the joint measures city government and public sector can take regarding the following topics. One is the unemployment plan for, to help any layoff citizens. Number two is, is there any action plan to help lay off citizens with utility bills, property taxes? Number three, is there any incentive plan that you are aware of to help citizens with mortgage payments, electricity, gas, telecommunications, et cetera?" That was Mr. the Onicio Gonzalez de Castillo, Castilla. The next one is Mr. Omar Gonzalez Longoria.
Yeah, if you don't mind, since it is a, we're under technical circumstances, I would ask, but before we start, or before we continue speaking, there's an echo that is very prevalent here. And then we could correct it. We can understand what you're trying to say. Starting the voice, my own call, I'll tell you the answer, Mr. E. Mr. Secretary, you briefly kind of addressed the question. And then?
Okay, Mayor, Council. If you still have this echo, perhaps they can start addressing. It's, if they hear the same echo from me, or they hear it from Mr. Gonzalez, it doesn't matter?
Right, test.
Test, one, two?
Right.
Okay, can we hear now?
It looks like, okay, microphone on. And also David Silva's microphone is on, if I'm not mistaken.
Everybody needs to be off on the web acts. Nobody should have their mics on. That should be established already, please. Until we call you.
Everybody needs to turn off their mic.
Until you're called, you need to be off, please. Let's wait till that happens.
With a series of three or four questions, but the city manager will address.
Okay, testing one, two? All right, Omedo, if you need the mic, everybody off, please turn everybody off. Okay, are we done?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So, a couple, taking those questions that we had from the person who asked about the recovery plans, helping unemployment questions, and our economy moving forward, at this point right now, what we're doing is we're addressing and assessing the magnitude of what's happening through our own economy here. Obviously, we're seeing bridge revenues, how that's affecting our economy. We're watching sales numbers as well. We are working with our private sector and all other agencies, whether they be at the local, state, federal level already. Working on a game plan to address some of these questions. Whether there are funds that come through our federal government, down to the state, or even locally, we are working through that. For us as a city moving forward, we cannot speak to how we would address businesses past our own at this point. And only that we are working all day, every day on issues that are, that matter to our business community, our private community, our community members as a whole. And so where we may not be able to give specifics today on how we would address unemployment tomorrow, we will be working on a plan moving forward in accessing all available resources. But we must first take a look at our own abilities as a city to continue. That's our principal struggle today, is to make sure that we are still viable moving forward. Because we won't be able to provide good assistance to our community if we're not a viable entity ourselves. And so, right now, today, we are not prepared to provide any substantial direct information as to what it would look like, how we would provide for the unemployment sector of our community, other than the assistance that we're going to continue to provide them today, and all the resources that are being made available through the federal government and through the state as well.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And of course, as we gather more information from our federal people and the state people as well, you'll be bringing that to us. And accordingly, we're developing the plan that we spoke about. But that's forthcoming, as we meet, we'll be speaking more about. Thank you.
Mayor, may I be really quick on this?
It's public comment, and then there's no agenda, you know, I did, I just fence with, with the fact that we're dialoguing now, but as they compare us to the people out there, you know, that's our city journey feels differently, but it's not an agenda.
I, I, I hear you. I'm with you. It's just that I'm going through this as a small business owner myself. I just want to tell people the two different avenues that they could work right now, since I'm going through those steps as well. One is through the bank, through their own local bank, and the other is through the federal government. There are two options to be able to look for as far as businesses are concerned. So, I just wanted to wear, and also unemployment as well is ramping up pretty quickly. And so there are mechanisms in place federally, but they haven't trickled down to it yet. But, but if you are a business owner, it, a lot of these money are accessed if you keep your employees and you keep your employees paid. Without that, it becomes a loan as opposed to possibly a grant, even though that hasn't been worked out completely. So, I would encourage all employers to keep their employees and look for federal assistance instead of just letting people off. That, that's all I was going to say to that, Mayor.
Yes, thanks very much. And I know Facebook, our economic development director will be speaking for that by way of videos and other Facebook programs. So, anyway, what's the next question, Mr. City Secretary?
This is from Omar Gonzalez Longoria. And he is the president of the Association of Logistics and Forwarding Agents. There's, it's, number one is, "Due to the curfew applied by the city ordinance and taking into consideration that World Trade Bridge is open after ten P M, can our employees and drivers forwarding and transportation industry be on the streets after ten P M when they are still attending operations?"
So, Mayor, if I can do?
Curfew only applies to juveniles. Yeah, juveniles who are ten to six. I guess, Mr. City Manager, go ahead.
I was going to repeat that, Mayor, yeah, seventeen and under, from ten, ten P M to six A M. Only juveniles.
And with your parents.
And with family, parent as well with you.
Part two, Mr. Longoria's comments is, "Can the city approach C B P to clarify if there is any document for our employees forwarding and transportation industry in order to enter the U S to perform essential operations for trade and transportation?"
Mr. City Manager, we've been visiting with the C B P people every day just about. Do you have a response to that?
Yes, our C B P offices, the local office can provide guidance on that. We can, we can ask for further clarification, but you're right, Mayor, we've been on phone calls with them on a daily basis. They, they do have an active list of what they consider essential. And if there's any questions as to what that means, if you can't get an answer from C B P, then, then call our offices and we'll get an answer for you.
Yes, thank you. If I'm understanding too, that the C B P officer does have some discretion, but of course, limited with those guidelines as they're following. Yes, thank you. Do you have the next follow-up question? Go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, it's from Mr. Hector Yanes, Yanas. He is from the Laredo beauty industry representing. And his comment is, "What are we doing to help small business owners? Our local beauty industry is being directly affected by the city ordinance. Would it be possible to pass a city ordinance to help us not pay rent at our local, at our locations? Can we be permitted to work at a limited capacity, example being stylists and clients wearing masks?"
And I would ask our City Manager to respond if you can.
Christie Hale, or City Attorney, if you want to respond?
Mayor, in light of the recent executive order that was passed by the governor, that would not be something we would be able to do with respect to allowing the businesses to practice. As far as giving them tax rates or rent rates and the rent, that again would be up to the council to decide, but at the same time, they've only issued a motion that would allow them to waive eviction processes. So, at this point, it's not something we could do under the executive order.
We already passed the motion. That's, that's the correct?
Correct, but even if we wanted to amend that motion, there was an executive order by the governor that was just issued this afternoon, and it prohibits these type of businesses from operating until April the thirtieth.
Yes, and in fairness, you know, the question, of course, those people I've been receiving also, because I've called from the business, the retail, you know, businesses that have been shut down. And I explained to them, and I, we all feel for you, and you all feel that you're basically more than others during the crisis that we, that we're having. And it's, it's something that no one asked for, obviously, but during the circumstances, you know, we, we have to just continue with what we have. You know, obviously, you see nationally, you see statewide, and of course, locally as well. And this is something that we, again, sympathize and empathize to over the business owners among us here, because some of those businesses are also closed, and you're not essential in our eyes. You're, you're not essential in possibly another scenario we're under. But when you're closed and you depend heavily, you depend for your life, but, I mean, again, we sympathize and empathize, but during the current situation, we just have to bear with it and hopefully we'll, 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 better, better, actually. Yes, go ahead.
Mayor? Businesses that says, "Jadeian," so we need something that's firm as a motion, or can you just allow them to do video streaming, operations, do nothing?
Mayor?
Maybe, maybe we'll take that under, yes, go ahead.
Mayor, yeah, so we're having a little bit of technical difficulties broadcasting out, and so we need to clarify that. If we just take a quick little pause to make sure that we're able to connect with our citizens first?
Seven fifteen minutes. Okay, will that make six, ten minutes reset, and we'll come back. Yes, thank you, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We took a reset. We're back in open session at six oh three P M, same day. And we were visiting on the comments. I think we, we completed the comment portion of our meeting. Is that correct, Mr. City Secretary? Thank you. Yes, Mr. City Secretary, I think that we were done with the public comment.
One more comment.
There's one more pending, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay, this is from Jo, Joanne Kim. And it says, "Delay and cancel interest and late payments on unpaid twenty nineteen property taxes, lawsuits, inability to make contact payments both for homestead and commercial." That's her comment. That's the last one, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, sir, comment. We'll be having some more agenda items, I mean, specifically as, as things unfold. But thank you. Moving on to the actual agenda item, we're going to reply at one. And it's, it's written by Air Force Tim Albert Silva Jr., as put forward by Councilmember Garoppolo, and then Councilmember Dr. Watsi Masi, and then Councilmember Ilan Bolivian. "It's a discussion with municipal action on amending the emergency ordinance that was passed by the city council on March sixteenth, twenty twenty, and extending the Declaration of Public Health Emergency and Order to Stay at Home, Work Safe, that was signed by myself and there on March twenty seventh, twenty twenty, in light of the growing number of COVID nineteen cases, and any other matters incident there, too." Come to the City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, City Council. We're asking the City Council, and I'm going to defer right now to our medical health authority, Dr. Gonzalez, as well, to speak to some of the medical pieces to this. But essentially, what we're going to be asking the City Council to do is to amend this emergency ordinance and this Declaration of Public Health Emergency and Order to Stay at Home, Work Safe Order up to April thirtieth to match the state of Texas order, and to also allow us to follow a state declaration, state disaster declaration, asking for state support as well.
Okay. Mr. Manager? You don't have a motion yet.
Can I say something?
We will be.
Mayor, Mayor. In addition to amending the executive order that you passed, this council wouldn't have to necessarily enter additional ordinance because of the executive order, again, that was passed by the governor today, pretty much mirrors the shelter in place order that you and the county judge passed a few days ago. So, really, the ordinance is not necessary unless this council wanted to take additional actions.
If you want to make it stricter, we have other things for you to raise.
Correct, yes.
If you're saying we're, yes, unless we want to make it tighter stricter, we should be okay based on, on the?
Mayor, may I be heard? This is Marte Martinez.
Yeah, hold on, let me get an answer to the question that I had.
Yes, that's correct. You can make it stricter, except you cannot prohibit those services, those essential services that the governor said were essential. You can't make them not allowed at this point, but you can make other additional regulations or restrictions, as long as they don't conflict with the governor's order.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Dr. Montal, go ahead, please.
Thank you, sir, and I apologize for interrupting you. Mayor, the question that I have is for Dr. Gonzalez and Dr. Trevino. Over the last week, we've seen an incremental increase in the number of cases, but it hasn't become exponential, if you will. Is this an indication that we're seeing, that our measures are working? And, and the question is, is this the time to clamp down further? Or is this the time to patient wait and see what happens? I'm concerned at how rapid this virus seems to spread. I'm also very concerned about how rapid this virus seems to take lives. Throughout the world, we've seen this, and, and I think here locally, we've seen that as well. And so, do you think the measures are currently working based on this trickle effect that we're seeing, or is this that lull that we see before we see the two-week spike, which we've seen in so many other communities? So, I guess I'll ask that question with Gonzalez and Dr. Trevino.
All right, go. Yes, please go ahead, Dr. Gonzalez and then Dr. Trevino. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor and Councilmembers, Hector Gonzalez, Director of Health Department. I think Dr. Trevino and I are on the same page with our recommendation, and as well as something, even Sunday, we brought the medical committee with the hospitals to an emergency meeting, where we were seeing a spike. But I, I think at this point, even with the, with the rise, because we're testing more, and it is local transmission, I think the measures are really working. And I think part of the physician's request was to make sure that we were enforcing and sending the message that they needed to stay there. And with the increase in enforcement, people are staying at home, shutting down the parks, I think made an extra effort as well. Having people not on the streets after ten, especially on the weekends, I think made a big difference. Because on the, on the other side, in analyzing, the majority of our cases are all clusters. And in one particular, there's seven family members, not only in the same house, but they're all extended family members. And the one thing?
Mayor, I'll be for a second. I think this is something that's truly important for the public to hear, this particular situation of this cluster. Because it's extremely important for people to recognize what this can do. Over the course of two weeks, or week and a half, a patient was relatively, had some medical problems, but nothing that you would classify as more than hypertension, diabetes, cholesterol issues, or just cholesterol, whatever it may be. Went from feeling a fever and a cold to an intubator, to dead in less than a week and a half. And, and that is shocking. And that is something that people need to hear and need to recognize. When we're staying shelter in place and stay home unless you have to go out, these are not if you want to. This is, you must stay at home to save lives. I don't know how more clear I can be than that. And I think this council needs to do their part to talk to all the citizens. And, and this is where each council member's responsibility, and this is where E O C needs to give each council our responsibility of talking to our constituents to tell people to stay home. People are listening, but not enough. I see people continuing to go to A T B Daily to get groceries. I see people continuing to go, in fact, until yesterday, people were still going to get their cars washed. I, I know people are starting to listen and people are concerned, but this is the utmost importance that people recognize, is you do not have to go out. Stay home.
Thank you, sir. Tell me about my doctor. I, I just really appreciate your comment with, you know, we need to continue with Dr. Gonzalez and then Dr. Trevino with the health authority for the City of Laredo. Does Dr. Gonzalez, would you finish that, and then Dr. Trevino with you?
Yes, absolutely, and, but Councilman Dr. Martinez is absolutely correct. This is why the medical committee was emphatic, that we needed to send a strong message. Not, not only is it clustering, but most of, most, most of the persons start with either mild or no symptoms, and some will evolve around the seventh to tenth day with beginning of shortness of breath, anxiety, tiredness, and then some will resolve. But that, at the seventh to tenth days, where some will complicate. And I can tell you that, that almost fifty percent that didn't go to the hospital all started having respiratory symptoms with shortness of breath. They recovered fine, but the ones that did it winded up going, where we have right now eleven in the hospital, three have been discharged. That's very good news. But all eleven had different levels of respiratory distress around the seventh to tenth day of early-on symptoms, and so.
And Dr. Gonzalez, in your estimate, and this one cluster was from one event, is that accurate?
Well, it, several events, but that, they were, they were all having family events, and so that.
So, it's fair to say that one carnasada has now caused two lives?
We, we can't say that, but certainly what we can say is that we have to take serious the distancing. There's no way around it. People have to stay home.
I just want the public to be very aware, and I, and it's very important.
Dr. Trevino?
Just go ahead, please.
Yes. What the people need to know is that, are we waiting for more deaths to happen to comply? Because the measures that have been instilled are good. They're adequate, they're correct. If they were, if they were followed to a hundred percent, that would be sufficient. But at this point, I've seen people on the street also, like, we've seen people driving around and doing things they shouldn't be doing, still. If they would go to any hospital, if they were permitted to go to the hospital, they would see how many patients we have in ICU, what the isolation looks like, what the nurses and doctors have to be doing every day to keep these people alive. They don't, they would understand that this is not something to just take lightly. And I would suggest that the measures that are there should be continued, and the time that we need to extend this should be extended, just to be in pair with the state and federal government. Now, it's predicted it's going to be about one hundred thousand to two hundred thousand deaths in the United States. Why are we going to be exempt from that? It, it, a lot of people believe that we're in a warm climate, and this is not going to affect us, but it will. It will, and we don't want to be lamenting after we have all these deaths, then to start complying.
Thank you, Dr. Dr. Joe.
Mayor, if, if, if the doctors are recommending that we extend this, then, then my motion is to extend to be in line with the state guidelines, and I hope that Council will second you.
Yeah, I think there's a, yeah, bottom order, because there's a motion made by Councilmember Vildman, we can make it to the stage, I would, I would say, yeah. And then seconded by, by?
Rudy.
Rudy.
I do apologize. I didn't hear. I do apologize. Thank you, Council. I do apologize. I didn't hear. I do apologize. Thank you, Council.
Should have motioned that it's gone.
Yeah, I'd like to raise an issue, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, please.
And so, looking at what we've done so far with regard to the most recent emergency order as it relates to the curfew, as I understand it, the curfew is only applicable to those who are 17 years old and younger. My suggestion is, or my amendment, rather, if it would be accepted, would be that we expand the curfew to include all citizens in the city of Laredo. There is no reason for, unless it's an emergency reason or essential reason as determined by the state. Frankly, there is no reason why any of us should be out and about after 10:00 p.m. other than, you know, medical, you know, food, checking on a loved one, et cetera. And so, that's part one of my amendment. Part two of my amendment is that we form a separate medical.
Councilmember Gonzalez, yeah, hold on a second. We can discuss this. Apparently, some councilmembers are. Go ahead, Mayor Gonzalez.
My only suggestion is that maybe we can vote upon what Councilmember Gonzalez had suggested. Then we go down the line to what are the suggestions we have and take those individually to not have a thick motion and confuse people like we've done in the past. So, I would suggest that maybe Councilor Alvo will stick ideas. I would have some amendments I'd like to propose, but then take them one at a time to be very imaginative here to the public.
And I'm fine with that. I'll leave that one amendment in place if that's okay. And then, yeah, we can do that.
Hold on a second, Mr. Mayor.
You withdraw your amendment?
No, no, no. I'll leave that amendment in place. That one's pretty simple. And then I'll, we can address the remainder of my motions.
Yeah, considering your proposal, then that question came up last time, and I believe our city manager and I think even our chief of police have spoken to us regarding the enforcement of the people, the people out there, and having the police enforce that. Mr. City Manager, do you hear?
Well, I'd like to address that real quick. You know, I used to be a prosecutor. I do almost exclusively criminal defense work. I've spoken with our city attorney. I've spoken with our police chief, and the enforcement is real simple. If you're out and about after 10:00 p.m., that's reasonable suspicion. And if we've got the available manpower, light somebody up, pull them over, inquire, where are you going? Is this an essential errand or not? One, it sends a great message. Two, it is meaningful enforcement, and that's what's missing right now. I've seen field report after field report. I've seen it with my own eyes. A lot of enforcement issues are popping up as it relates to the previous emergency order. And the previous emergency order doesn't mean anything without meaningful enforcement. And so, I don't need a legal scholar to tell me whether or not it's enforceable or not. I think we've heard from enough folks to know that it is. I understand that District Attorney's Office has been contacted, and they've run the legal analysis as it relates to reasonable suspension there. It's enforceable all day long if we have the will.
Okay, then, yeah, the makers of the motion, whether or not you would allow the amendment.
Mayor, from what I see, I think it would be best to just take it one at a time, while the extension of time, and then several other type of amendments to enforce, so that it's.
Maybe we can bring it back and start there right now and see if it's just a little bit more on this one. And then you can bring your amendment back.
But we're just voting on the.
Mayor, bottom order?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, the speakers over here where we're at, we couldn't hear the original motion. Was it to extend the order to April 30th?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and who made the motion, please?
Yeah.
Councilmember Belzón, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez, Rudy Gonzalez.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
The other question? Hold on a second. Any opposed? Done, done? Done? Motion carried unanimously, please. Now, we can take any proposed amendments.
Yeah. Go ahead. I'll reiterate my amendment to extend the curfew to everybody past, you know, 10:00 p.m. as those essential services errands as defined by the governor's statute.
Did you say 10:00 or 10:00?
10:00. 10:00 p.m. is what we heard, unless you think we should move it, make it earlier.
I just wanted to be clear on your statement. So, 10:00 p.m.?
I said 10:00 p.m. If somebody would like to move that time further back, I'd be happy to entertain that.
I think 10:00 is a pretty good time, too.
Well, if I.
We have a motion to amend. Is there a second?
I'm not second.
Okay, seconded, Mayor Gonzalez. Ballot for discussion, first?
So, I support the motion if we require the employers that are considered essential to provide points for the letter, that in case they're pulled over, they show that letter for employers that they're working for an essential business or for a physical service. They could, you know, a nurse, a doctor, or a prostitute could be pulled over. They've got that letter, and they show that will probably serve its purpose. So, we need to provide those essential people with that, because that's the only way I would support it.
That's a great claim. That makes sense.
Mayor?
That's a great. Mayor, go ahead.
Hold on, hold on, please. Councilmember Belzón has the floor. Go ahead.
We have several businesses that are easily identified with their social identity. We're just wanting to make sure.
We can't hear her?
You don't want to blow that?
I was saying that it could lead to the letter as a. For some sports, could do an ID that they. Or you want that you can do that. It can be a court certificate, although I agree with Councilmember Algo, that it will be spot and start at this weekend. It's free in traffic.
I can hear. It sounds super.
Basically saying that she supports with that act of matter, also including IDs from a hospital or a place where they work. In order to ease this.
Yeah, add the amendment. Add the amendment. I like it.
Mayor, city manager, that's the question?
And hold on. City manager, go ahead.
Yeah, so just so that we can make sure that we understand how we could enforce this, just for clarity. What if we have somebody that needs to, has a sick child, needs to go to Stripes to get cough syrup or something at 11:00? How do we prove that?
Mr. Manager, I would assume with the officer, you said that you need to go get cough syrup for your sick child, and the officer would allow you to go through.
Okay, but we're asking for IDs and letters and stuff, so I just want to be clear, because our general public will call our offices directly and ask all these questions to us. And so, we just want to be clear moving forward what this looks like.
The officer can use their discretion.
Okay, so to be clear, there has to be a lot of officer discretion. If someone makes that claim, we have to make sure that that is also something that they can have discretion for, because we may run into those instances, just those circumstances. Or small businesses who don't, or businesses who don't have necessary IDs. I want to make sure that it's.
I was going to suggest our office could have a draft letter or template and provide it to those people.
So, letters?
Yes, for those.
Yeah, and what they do in other countries is the cities will have a link that folks can download, the form, they can fill it out, print it, or take a picture of it, PDF it, take it with their cell phone, and they can do that as well. Ultimately, it comes down to officer discretion, and for those of us who've been law enforcement, we know cops know how to ask really tough questions in different ways and to get down to the bottom whether somebody's lying or not. So, simple answer to the question is officer discretion, and they've got it, and they know what to do with it.
I agree.
Any other discussion?
I do. I want to say something, and this is to all the officers and to the chief, because we've had, it seems very innocent to get together with friends at this particular time. It seems very innocent. It doesn't seem like it's a big deal to allow people to congregate. And it feels like you're almost doing the wrong thing right now by having officers, you know, when officers are pulling people over. You're not. You're saving lives right now by enforcing these rules. And so, Chief, I just want you guys to remember that you have at least my full support in any enforcement measures that you have to take, because right now you are really saving lives by taking these very serious.
Thank you, Doctor. Personally speaking, I think I need to hear from the chief. Chief Trevino, are you somewhere?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening, Chief.
Yes, I've been listening to the comments, and absolutely, our officers are out there, and they're eagerly enforcing this order. They understand the seriousness of the order and the situation we're going through. So, yes, whatever comes out of this meeting, whatever directive we change and decide on, we'll pass it on to the officers. The officers understand, and they're out there forcing. I appreciate all the support that we get from management, from Council, and we continue to push that message and make sure that we stress the urgency of the situation.
Yes, with a full understanding, I agree, Chief, that you will have full discretion. Your officers will have full discretion, because I know it gets hard to enforce so many things. But I think you know that is the objective here, and that for people to stay home on that. It's some sort of an emergency, or you're part of an essential employment and some sort of kept them there at those hours from 10:00, is it 10:00 to 5:00 or 10:00 to 6:00? 10:00 to 5:00, 5:00 a.m.
And to be effective, what?
And to be effective, what? I guess that's a good question.
I would suggest, you know, effective immediately. I mean, upon, you know, we don't need to, I mean, every second goes by that we're not being just confronting this head-on.
Remember, it's passed with the last 24 hour, but at least to get the word out. George, when giving the, our public relations, give an opportunity to make people know the employers, I think that on Thursday, October 1st, would be a good practice that we get all day tomorrow to address this in front of the public.
Yeah, we asked them as well. Management's asking for that, so we can notify employers, employees, just a common citizen as well to know.
Yeah, okay, that's cool. But I just would mention this to our, you know, Public Information Office. There's been a couple of, there's been one post where like two of the people from the Public Information Office are sitting on a love seat next to each other, not, no masks, and they're, you know, not socially spaced. And if we are going to give that message, let's make sure we've got faces covered. Let's just have one person, use graphics, use technology, make it dynamic, make it interesting. But we have to do much of what we're doing tonight, you know. Y'all all look great, by the way, in city council. You know, you've got your masks on, our space away from each other, and that's how it's supposed to be. And so, we can just make sure our messaging reflects, and then, you know, us practicing what we preach. I've got no problem with us doing that for this period, so we can kind of ease the clutch and the enforceability of the curfew, no problem.
Thank you. Our floor goes to Benan Rodriguez, Councilmember.
And just for the people, just for the residents of Laredo, to be clear, how much is the fine, are we looking at how much is the expense for the patients to make note? Is there out, and it's not essential, so they can know what's going on?
Fine, I think if it's not more than $1,000, jail will fine, and then it carries the jail.
Up to one.
Carry it as well.
Up to 100 minutes. Up to 100 minutes, yes, up to six months.
Six months and a $1,000 fine.
Class B?
Is that a class B or A?
It's a class B.
The B?
B as in Bravo.
Okay, any further discussion? Now, I heard all the papers say I. Any opposed? Shout out? Now, I heard, why don't you carry unanimously, please? Thank you.
Mr. Tell, you're going to be having that sample there with the employers?
Yes, yes, I'll have. I'll have a link so they can download it as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Mayor?
Go ahead, Mayor Gonzalez.
I'd like to see the motion to cancel all the liquid tax sales and auctions for the month of April and May to go in line with our addiction portion of the original order that we proposed. I think that right now is not the time to have people vacate their home with the conditions.
That can. It pertains to city taxes.
City taxes, and that couple stock the other end of the city. The city horrible.
There you go. Okay, so there's a motion of Mayor Gonzalez presented. Seconded, Councilmember Rudy Gonzalez. Discussion?
I have a question. Do we have any that's written in order?
No, that's what I'm managing. They didn't have evictions, so I don't think that people get evicted. Actually, simple eviction for nonpayment.
So, they can, so from March, can I be?
Right, well, the sale for March would take place in April, so for April and May. So, that's been in April and May. The sale that takes place in April would be delivered for the March, for March, to the March sale. Right, so next week is the sale for March, but it's pretty first, something that sell that would take place in April and May.
Okay, call for the one, please.
Mayor, I couldn't hear. I apologize. I couldn't hear the motion. I'm sorry.
So, could you repeat the motion? I think they could hear you better.
I hope I can hear. It was a motion to cancel all the liquid tax sales for the month of March?
No, to cancel all the liquid tax sales and auctions for the month of April and May.
Okay, April and May, sorry.
Thank you.
What's the other favorite day, I? Any opposed? Now, I heard, why don't you personally, please? Next, together business? Yes, sir.
I'd like to open an amendment to require face masks in lieu of the restaurant service people, and also to make sure that they're not handling their money.
Can we make the motion repeated by the city secretary?
It was a motion to have employees wear face masks in restaurants?
Restaurant employees.
The what?
In gloves.
Oh, in gloves, I'm sorry.
I think that's beyond the, that's beyond there.
Yeah, I haven't seen it being, I mean, I've heard, I've been seeing some chatter that it's not being enforced across the board, so it doesn't hurt to kind of underscore that. I would second it, and I would also amend it, that for the public, if they have to go run an essential errand, if they keep their nose and their mouth covered, they don't need, it doesn't need to be a mask, but they need to contain whatever it is they're putting out. They need to contain it within, as everyone is doing in the city manager's office, as everyone is currently in the city council.
Councilmember Gonzalez, I think we're thinking one by one, so here, only potential restaurants.
A simple amendment, make the meeting go along quicker, but we can, okay, fine.
Yeah, we decided to take it out of line. And your amendment would make, and I beg your patience, please, go ahead.
So, the internal work restaurants, because I've seen that they're pretty much take their order without, and not work. Who requires, but it's not any glove of the people working in restaurants, and also for that, they're not handling the money with the same glove they're handling.
Mayor, may I have a just for discussion? Mayor, may I have a just for discretion? It is included in the order, the problem is, because the also called me regarding that, is that the order already says available. So, we're seeing that a lot of businesses, and then I want to say this to cover everybody, but are being a bit, are being a bit irresponsible is what I'm being told by insurance or, that since it's available, um, they're saying, well, there's back orders, we don't have any, we don't have any, we don't have any, because of that illegitimate stipulation in the order, they're washing their hands and saying, but why, that there isn't any, right? So, uh, I think it's important that we reemphasize that, but I think that with the original order and the standard of available because of the shortage of masks, they love, why they're, they're not doing it or taking advantage of that reality and that.
Okay, Doctor, you want to speak to that? I know you.
Yes, Mayor.
You're the last, we heard, we heard people, or you're for the barrier.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor and council members, Director of the Health Department, they're already doing it and it's in the order and that's, that's a standard. What we need to do is, is Councilman Algo is saying is go back and do reeducation, because some of them don't have, they may have gloves, they don't have enough to change, they should be changing. And so, even with the gloves, they need to sanitize the gloves with every action they take. And that's why we're going to the restaurants and reeducating them to do that, and then, if, if nothing else, wash their hands. And so, we'll go out to the restaurants, our staff are still out there checking, not all, all the food establishments, all of the warehouses to make sure that they're complying with the distancing and the management of hygiene and wearing the gloves, um, so we'll, we'll go back out there to make sure that they understand there is, there is still a shortage of gloves, but most of the restaurants have it limited, so, yes, continue to wear the gloves, but in between each action, the gloves need to be sanitized with, 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 uh, the alcohol prep. We've also told them to, in, in lieu of if they don't have sanitizer, all of them have been told, a cup of water, a cup of bleach and a gallon of water can be used to rinse and dry again before each action. It, it's a little cumbersome, but I think we've all said it. It may take you a couple of minutes more to clean the gloves in between each action, but this can save lives.
Okay, based on what you said, that there's no need for the motion that, personally, what, what's the amendment?
No, there's, there's a need for the motion, because the, the previous motion said if you have the resources available, now what we're learning is that, um, you know, if, if folks keep their faces covered and are, or rigorously, what, either washing their hands or the gloves that they're wearing in repeated intervals, that there's, there's, the best practice, um, right now. Um, so, so I would say keep the motion, uh, in, in place and include that they must, their employees must keep their faces covered and must adhere to repeated hand washings, um, as their, throughout their work shift.
Okay, amended, uh, by, amended by the mayor and the second. Okay, discussion.
Matt, you heard real quick?
Yes, please.
So, you know, I, I, I keep hearing that, you know, people are using these masks, um, with, with the, with the goal of not getting infected, and, and, and I, and I understand that. We're all concerned about what this could mean to our health, but, but I, I, I hope that people start understanding using these masks, not for yourself, but for your fellow person, so that if you happen to be an asymptomatic carrier, that you protect the community. So instead of the mask being for you, the mask should be for everyone around you. It should be of self-sacrifice, not of self-protection. And so, whether it's a food handler, whether it's a person on the street, it doesn't matter. I know we're speaking just to the food handlers right now, but we need to change this mindset of that it's to protect ourselves, it needs to be to protect the raido and the field. I hope people can stick to that.
Hey, Doctor, uh, call for the question. I know, you have one more, I'm sure. Council member, Vidal Rodriguez, go ahead.
Hello, this is for management, I don't know if you have the information, but, uh, prior to we, uh, enforcing the executive order by the mayor, uh, how many restaurants were actually visited or being in compliance with the food handlers? And how many are being done after COVID? Because I know that was a topic that I had touched on and you guys had mentioned that you guys were going to go full force, so do you have those numbers?
What was the? Say that, can you all repeat the question, please, the, the last part of that, please?
Uh, how many restaurants, I guess, in Florida have been visited? I know, uh, the procedures of, uh, food sanitation has been kept up to par with prior to the COVID, uh, the enforcement of the.
More than, like, COVID than I waited to current, right? How many, what have we?
Mayor, Mayor and, and council members, uh, Victor Gonzalez, the Director of the Health Department, all sixteen hundred restaurants are inspected every month and we continue to inspect them eve- before, um, the current, uh, COVID actions, and even now we continue, and all the mobile vendors as well, so, we continue and all of them, all of them are inspected. Then we have the food handlers education, uh, that continues online and certification. Our certification is, is one accepted by the state of Texas where if, if we give it here, give the certificate, they can, it's valid anywhere else in the state of Texas. So, we adhere pretty strictly to the food training and the inspections, and we, we continue to do that.
Can the report predict council meeting of, of today having, same time, uh, talking food?
And Councilmen, they're, they're on the website, they're on the website, the city website.
It's on the website.
It's on the website. It's on the website. Check, okay, bring up next down, what's that? Okay, if we get an agenda, I don't, I don't, okay, go ahead. No, okay. Okay, uh.
Mayor, this is Chief Davino, if I may.
Okay, Chief.
Yes, so the question of enforcement, uh, I don't know, the doctor might have answered the question, but just to, to give information to, to council, uh, we visited over seventeen hundred businesses, the eighteen, and amongst those businesses, the restaurants and convenience stores selling food and such. So, the enforcement has been very active. We've also answered to, uh, six hundred and fifty-six complaints that were directly called into our centers, um, with regards to different issues at restaurants and other businesses. So enforcement is there, um, uh, if the doctor can work with us, we can probably, uh, dissect those numbers and, and provide some specific, uh, food handling or, or food-related calls, uh, to businesses that, that sell those type of, uh, or have those numbers, so we can probably work on that and have some numbers for you at later time.
Chief, this is Dr. Gonzalez.
And, uh, with a future, uh, uh, council meeting, and we could assess that.
Mayor.
Call for the question.
Mayor.
Call for the question. Is, uh, someone have a comment or a question?
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor, this is Dr. Gonzalez again, uh, just to, to echo what the chief is saying. Uh, we, we've always partnered, but even more, more so, PD and health have gone to daycares, PD and health have gone to restaurants, PD and health have gone to convenience, so we'll, we will continue to do that and I'll get with the chief so we can, uh, give council a, a, a report.
Thank you, Doctor. Call for the question now, all the papers say aye, go ahead. Any opposed? Not heard, motion carried, thank you.
I think that following along the lines of Councilmember Algo, it's important that we do require the, the usage of, of peak spots to cover our mouths, of nostrils, um, and we've been seeing how these places are inclining, um, towards this and how that has helped in declining the actual, um, spike of, of these kind of cases and, um, bringing the, the curve down. With that being said, Doctor Martinez is right, um, it, it protects the mask, whether it's a homemade mask, a scarf, a banana, whatever it is, protects the droplets or our personal droplets from getting to a person you're with, but if we start asking for people to wear masks, we protect them and they protect us, right? And discussing this with Doctor Gonzalez and Doctor Davino, it doesn't mean that people become, um, I guess, immune to COVID nineteen, but it helps to, in spreading these droplets, especially for those people that are asymptomatic. So, I'd like to make a motion to require everyone that must leave their home to have to cover their mouths and nose with a protective mask, sewing mask, scarf, handkerchief or any piece of cloth. The city would ban books anywhere in public without such cover and impose a fifty-dollar fine for violating the ban. And if this happens, that we need fabric stores to be essential businesses so that people can fabricate and make their own, um, masks or anything to cover their, their nose and, and mouth.
Mayor, if possible, I, I wouldn't be honored of seconding this, because I've been trying to champion this for a while and thank you, uh, Mayor Protemp, I really appreciate you saying that.
Okay, we have two seconds, uh, Rudy Gonzalez. And Doctor Martinez, I'm sure, I'll, I'll. Okay, so, uh, discussion.
And Mayor, before we go, well, and, and give people, um, uh, seventy-two hours and also the source to open for fabric to start implementing this mask effort.
I think it's doing it.
Well, okay, so, uh, I changed that to run the same as the curfew, so Thursday at twelve oh one A.M., um, the mask will be required for everyone leaving their home.
amended, second that amended.
Third, it has amended, uh, question, um, for discussion, Mr. Mayor, uh, as it relates to the, I, what, I think we should keep the, the fine structure, um, and the, um, possible incarceration structure the same as with the, with the curfew and the non-essential. That way it doesn't complicate things for, for PD. I think Chief, you and I have had, um, that way it just, your officers know exactly what can be done and plus we're really impressing upon, um, folks the, the severity, um, of the situation. In other words, the, the orders that have been issued, they're not asked. These are shall, these are must. You must be a brother keeper, you must be a shepherd to the flock, you must put this cover over your face so that we don't end up like so many other cities, um, before us. So I just, I, I would, I would, um, very respectfully commend the motion that, uh, is on the table to include that the fee structure, um, and the finding and penalties, um, mirror that, uh, our existing, um, penalties and, and, uh, that are, that are in place with regard to curfew and being out for non-essential errands.
Have a clarification?
Tell Mayor. Yes.
Um, with regard, with regard to the stores, did you mean fabric stores only or anybody that sells fabric? What businesses are you exempting?
Um, I think, uh, anybody that can make this, that, anybody that, that, that sells fabric, kind of like Hobby Lobby, um, they have a fabric department, allow them to open. If their fabric stores downtown, they'd be allowed to open as well.
Uh, Mayor.
They sell a lot of other things.
Yeah.
I gotta say, you, you want them to open or do you want to get them to start making masks? That, I would not say open, I, 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 I don't think that's what we should be doing. I think we should get and incentivize them to start making masks, but not open to the general public. I think that's contrary to what we're trying to do right now.
Okay, thank you, uh, the city manager, go ahead.
Yeah, so if, if there's any one business that we're allowing now to be open in addition to any others that are open, can we restrict at least, if nothing else, the ten-person rule? If this is going to be for this fabric store? I'm not suggesting Hobby Lobby at all, I'm, I'm thinking more of a fabric store specific, not, not a, a hobby store that sells fabric.
We would be violating the governor's order.
Correct, and so Christie's pointing out that we'd be violating the governor's.
Hold on, hold on, uh, the city manager, go ahead, and then Christie, uh, the city, just go ahead.
We would need to allow only gatherings that are allowed by the governor, so if we were to allow businesses that make, um, make masks or have fabrics for masks, we could do that, but Hobby Lobby would only be able to allow them to sell fabrics, for example, or to sell masks, but we couldn't expect that, because they sell too many things and that's, that's contrary to the governor's order.
And, and.
Yes, Mayor Protemp, go ahead.
Please tell.
Yes.
So, how, how, how do you suggest we, we do this to allow people to purchase what they need to make masks?
Either prohibit the craft stores from selling anything but masks or just allow fabric stores. There are fabric stores in, in town that just sell fabric.
Okay, so then, uh, part of my motion would be to allow those stores that sell only fabric and stores that have a fabric department that choose to watch open, to just open for the purpose of the fabric department.
Mayor. Again, we, we caution, again, wanting to reopen stores like Hobby Lobby, that's, that's, and others, I don't need to specifically point out them, but if we're truly encouraging people to stay home, we're, we're kind of going the opposite direction when, when we start talking this.
Well, Mr. City Manager, we talked about, I'm underdosing to what we've told us, telling us, she's saying that they could open for fabric department, so we need to be on the same page on this, and if what's going to make it easier is just say fabric stores and just fabric stores, I guess.
That's, that's what I would suggest, and I think Christie, Haley would agree with me. If we could just narrow it to just fabric stores and leave it at that, I think everybody would, would agree with that.
And, but Mayor, does, Mayor, does the, Mayor, again, they would have to adhere to the strict distancing. We don't want to reopen stores, we want people away from the commerce, we won't go at their homes, so we won't, we don't want them gathering.
They, everybody's still, uh, by, by the six feet, they have to, that's in the governor's order.
So I do that in my motion to include, uh, six feet distancing, I know they have to, but just as a, as an underlying and, uh, um, reinforcement of that.
And there's an amendment, um, a proposed amendment on, on the, on the floor for consideration.
On the what?
Is it proposed, a m- a m- on the floor for consideration?
That would, that would involve the fee, right, the, the line?
Yeah, just to keep it consistent with, um, the, uh, the ones that are already in place, so the chief can have fair enforcement.
Mayor, I think, okay, Mr. David, I understand where you're coming from deeply, but I think we should just continue the way, uh, with, with, uh, Phil Protemp's proposal for not more than sixty-dollar fines for now, and then see how that works out for us, hopefully, the people who listen and, and they start ordering their medicine and providing beers, we hope to be extremely.
If, if, I mean, if we don't make it, if we don't make the, if there are any real consequences, um, and we don't impress upon folks the urgency of keeping the mouth covered, um, we're, we're only failing our citizens just by that much more. I would just respectfully, um, request that we have it be consistent so that the police aren't even having to like, okay, well, is it, uh, you know, what was the, what was that? Yeah, oh, oh, that's a fifty-dollar fine, okay. I mean, if the danger should be taken very, very seriously, it's what we are putting out there, um, uh, keeping the mouth and nose covered contains what we're putting out there, and if you don't love your fellow raido with that much enough to keep your mouth covered, then the police ought to be able to say, you know what? You're, yeah, you're, you're gonna get, you're gonna get arrested, you're gonna get fined or what have you, because a fifty-dollar class C, you know, fine, I mean, I guess in the shortage of toilet paper, they could use the, the paperwork for that, but other than that, it makes the, the rules meaningless.
Okay. Council member, go ahead.
Well, under respect, uh, I, I, you know, for some people, I see the, the basic, you know, fifty-dollar fine, for a lot of people it's not, and we understand that a lot of people are wasting a lot of money on sanitizer, on supply that they need for the home, on food, some people are losing jobs, not everybody's going to be able to, to, to afford those fifty dollars, so I think for now, the fifty-dollar fine is, is, is a minimal, is, I guess, how much is fifty dollars? Mr. Sorry?
Fifty dollars is a lot.
Yeah, it's also very expensive to bury a loved one, too, so, I mean, I may, I just think from an enforcement standpoint, it makes perfect sense to keep it consistent.
Mayor, this is.
Hold on, any amendment so far? None, okay, go ahead, Doctor.
Okay, um, you know, I, I, I know that fifty dollars is really tough for a lot of people, especially because we're seeing all this unemployment occur throughout the city, it's, 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 there's no joke. Um, and, and, and really, there's really not much difference, if you can't afford fifty dollars, you can support five hundred dollars. If you can't afford fifty dollars, you can't afford a thousand dollars. And you can't afford fifty dollars, you can't afford a thousand dollars. And, and what we're trying to do is we're trying to convince people to, to use these masks to try to save lives. Think about the horrible measures that our city's done, council. We've shut down schools, we've shut down businesses, we've shut down retail. We've done everything because we've seen what this disease can do in such a short manner. Just a short matter of weeks. We have a family hurt that, that, that has a lot of loss in their family simply because they didn't know, but we know better now. And my heart goes out to that family. Any decision the council makes right now of saying fifty dollars is too much or a hundred dollars is too much, whole point is to get people to use masks so no other family has to go through this anymore. That's what we need. And so if people use these masks, whether it's a five hundred or a thousand-dollar fine or fifty-dollar fine, the point is to get people to use these masks so that no one has to go through this darn loss that this family is going through right now. Because it's, it's, it's tragic, and, and it's the loss of Laredoans. So, please, council, make it a meaningful thing so that everybody has to use these masks. Everybody has to use them to protect each other, we have to.
And, and at the end, I think that the judge will have that discretion of, you know, when they go before the judge, and that's a terribly inconvenient as well, uh, by having to go to the court, uh, you know, that in itself is, is a penalty. Uh, so maybe, maybe council should be considering, has the judge had his fresh guilty?
Mayor, real quick?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, at this point, and like you guys say, it's meaningful. Well, it's already meaningful when they get tired with their break in curfew. It's already meaningful if they're doing ten more. At this point, by the time that we're on the virus is down, uh, the city, we don't, I, I decided when the city should be richer based on finding the kinds of people, fifty dollars is meaningful because if you break it one day, you break it two days, three days in a row, that's a hundred and fifty already, guys. I mean, when, when this is all said and done, people are gonna be up to their necks in fines, the people that don't listen, and we're gonna create a bigger hole and, and it's gonna be a devastating economy for the city of Laredo that's in fines alone. I mean, come on, man, that's unreasonable. It's, but at this point, you're gonna murder them in death.
Well, I'd rather bury them in death than bury them in a coffin. And if you were paying attention to the EOC meeting today, Corina Stern was, was asked indirectly through Judge Stino, um, hey, what kind of storage capacity do we have at the morgue? I mean, if that wasn't a sobering moment in our, uh, lack of emergency readiness, and I'm not spoiling fingers, the whole country's been, the whole planet's been caught flat-footed on this. I mean, the least we can do is have it so that it's a meaningful consequence if you don't care enough about your fellow Laredoan to cover your mouth up. And it's, it's, I mean, I'd rather be buried in death than buried in a, in a, in a pine box.
Do you think that we made a, do you?
And I'll get it this way, George, everything is even irrelevant. The bridge is not closed, people are crossing in a different way. How are you gonna enforce it? You're gonna say, you know what, do this, lock that, do this, lock that, but people can still cross at four at night, seven at night. But, I mean, you guys wanna do something, but it's not even on a three, six, it's not even on a gold circle. There's always, it's, everything here is open, isn't it? We don't need a problem.
You raise a good point, you raise a good point. We're neighbor, we're next-door neighbors to a country that's not even taking this seriously. And the amount of illegal and legal immigration that's coming in and out, uh, is startling. But I think that just means that we have to take even that much more precautions so that we're safeguarding ourselves and the public that much more. Um, and I, I, I realize that, forgive me for my passion getting up, but I, 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 this is something that, I mean, it's, it's so simple, it's just, it's just having the fines and the penalty be consistent with, um, with, with, with what's already there. And PD again has the discretion, you know, the officer can say, okay, man, I get it, you know, you're, 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 you're a little old lady, you have humble means, you, you don't have Facebook, you're out and about, you're going to the doctor, I get it, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give you a ticket, man, please don't go out again without your child or your, 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 your mero or whatever. Like, we still have officer discretion, the chief could still make good use of that. But, but would be twenty-something who thinks he's young and bulletproof and está bien guapetín, no se va a poner ninguna de sobre su cara. A este cabrón, he needs to get the full weight of the law because he's the one that's about to call an emergency.
Thank you. We can all hit that.
I have, I have a question, I need back to that, uh, from Doctor, uh, Dr. Gonzalez. Uh, because we know that they're concerned in using the masks so that we don't, um, you know, with our own structures cannot bother other people or, etc. people. But what about the, the gloves? And I know that it's up to, you know, availability, but I feel people may have gloves, religious, uh, guard gloves or different gloves that they might use. Uh, but I have seen an article by a doctor where, even the grocery, if somebody that wasn't inspected and touched the cereal box or touched something that you ended up buying, then this puts a leave on the, on the, on itself for three days. So, uh, truthfully, I would include some precautionary measures of using gloves.
Mayor, uh, council, Hector Gonzalez, the director of the health department, um, yes, yes, council member Vietnam, uh, COVID virus could live up to seventy-two hours in, in adamant objects, but the mode of transmission is not through, um, the mode of transmission is through air droplets at, at this point. So, that, that's not so much of an issue right now, but the, the regular hygiene with the food handlers, for example, yes. But for persons to wear gloves necessarily, um, is, is, right now, I don't, I don't think is an issue.
Yes, I agree with Doctor Gonzalez, but, uh, people need to know the mode of transmission besides the respiratory, uh, way and the contact way. And, uh, if you don't have enough gloves or resources to purchase gloves, you can sanitize the gloves, like we said. And the masks are another thing, although the masks don't protect the virus from coming in and out, but it, it is, offers some protection. So, these things have to be taken into consideration that although they're not foolproof, they do help. So, education is one of the things that's very important, to let the public know how to protect themselves and how to protect the people around them. So, uh, that, that would be very important to, to just in, inform the people and educate them. I think we need to strive more in education along with enforcement, but it goes hand in hand.
So, so you would not recommend for people to wear gloves that is up to their?
I would recommend if they sanitize them constantly, like sanitizing your hands. It would be approximately the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, with what Trevino's saying, and that's what I'm saying as well, that if you're gonna use gloves, you're gonna have to be changing the glove every time you touch anything, anytime you take an action, anytime you exchange. So, you would have to sanitize it with the nine-month gloves. Better still is wash your hands. So, we wouldn't recommend that.
Mayor, may I be heard?
Yeah, yes, Mayor Protan. Make the sale?
Yes.
So, would, would you suggest that, that we just stay at home then and pay up to a thousand dollars and ask them to report judges and test the fine?
Yeah, if you need it up to a hundred, a thousand dollars, the court could do that. Otherwise, fifty, it would just be fifty, and he would have no discretion, except that.
Yeah, Mayor, may I be heard on, on that, for sure, please?
Yes, go ahead, be brief, please, go ahead.
I, I will, I will, Mayor. Um, uh, council member, uh, Rodriguez, the, the, what you said, it ma- makes a, a lot of sense. And, and, and I, I think it's important that people realize that we're not trying to be punitive as far as trying to drop people in debt. What we're trying to do is get a point across. As policymakers, we don't have, uh, control over every ounce of this universe. We don't have control over everything that happens, especially because we live on the border. We can only control what we can control. And what we can control is, within our community, make it very meaningful that, uh, people are aware that if they take this thing, uh, if, if they take this thing seriously and if they have a personal responsibility to, uh, their fellow man, that no matter what the fine is, it, that's not the point. The point is making it very clear, um, to everybody as a, as a, as a governing body that we think this is important. It, it's not that we're trying to bury people in debt or her or economy or, because people are hurting right now. It, it's just that we need to make it abundantly clear to every citizen. And I think they're getting it, it's not like people aren't getting it, people are understanding. We just have to push harder because we have to flatten this curve. We have to fight this thing. It's an invisible opponent that, that we think, and we look around and it looks like a beautiful day to day. It looks like a gorgeous day, it's sunny and it looks cool, it's perfect, it looks like it's all peace. And, and like I said, it's perfect, but it's not. This thing is here, and it can grow, and other communities are dealing with it in a very, very horrible manner. So, again, council member, I don't think that what, what we're trying to do or anybody's trying to do is to bury people in debt. What we're trying to do is make meaningful decisions, meaningful steps, so that people are absolutely aware of what they can do to take personal responsibility for this disease.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mayor, can I ask one question? Council member, Doctor Martinez.
Yes, sir.
Uh, as I'm getting, uh, mixed, um, messages here, what, what is that you would consider, um, essential regarding the penalty for this? The up to a thousand in fine?
What, what, what you said, discretion is perfect. Uh, what you said i- i- is perfect, with the discretion of, 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 of the judge, I think that's perfect. What, what I was speaking to wasn't, it wasn't what you had said. I was speaking to the fact that I understand the frustration that so many people are losing their jobs and we don't have, we, we sure don't wanna put people in debt. We sure don't want to put people in a situation where they can't afford this. What we're trying to do, and I think as a council, and I think you agree, is we're trying to make sure that people get the message, that's it.
Doctor, we have two levels of discretion here. You know, you got two layers, and then basically the, uh, the law enforcement. I mean, they can use discretion, uh, a warning, uh, if they, if they see that they're terribly abusive of, of the order or whatever, then enforce them. We have the, uh, the law enforcement, and then we have the judge as well, and.
I, I agree, Mayor. Mayor Protan, can I answer your question, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, there's still part of my motion would be that to have the same penalty and even up to the discretion of the judge.
Okay, as amended, call for the question. All of the members, say aye. And your phones. Not opposed, voting carries, unanimously, thank you.
Mayor, I've got two other motions that I'd like to make.
Go ahead.
Um, the other motion is, we, we've seen how the food banks have assisted many families. Uh, we did, uh, it was brought to our attention on the Laredo Regional Food Bank. Uh, it's also assisted, um, families, and I quote personally to Carmen Garcia, who's the executive director, and she wrote down how they're helping Laredo residents as well as, um, West County Committee of Action Agency residents. Um, they're running very low on their pantry. Um, I asked her what was it that she needed, and she said that ten thousand dollars from the CEO of Laredo would help her provide sixteen hundred families with meals for the month of April. So, I'd like to make the motion that we, uh, provide the Laredo Regional Food Bank with, uh, ten thousand dollars, second.
Second. Yeah, and, uh, discussion.
And a second, discussion, yes, go ahead.
Yes, could we also assist, um, the, uh, the local, uh, Laredo Regional Food Bank as well? I know they serve a lot of elderly folks and a lot of folks having the money, as well as the, I'm sorry?
That is a motion of the Laredo Regional Food Bank.
Oh, I'm sorry, I heard South Texas, uh, Food Bank, I'm sorry, yes, all right. You got it covered. Uh, then I would only amend, um, they, they get a lot of assistance from the, um, uh, New Vision, uh, church, the Joseph Pantry on Meadow, um, that we also include assistance, uh, for them, uh, to match what we're doing with the Regional Food Bank because they're, they're also delivering a lot of food to the Regi- Laredo Regional Food Bank for distribution as well. So, just kind of covering both those bases, that's my, my amendment.
I would, I, I, I'm opposed, I accept your amendment, let's take a motion at a time. Let's vote on the Regional, uh, the Laredo Regional Food Bank for ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Second, yes.
All right, now bring mine up just right after, sure.
Call for the question. All of the members, say aye. I give up. Not opposed, uh, voting carries.
Mayor, I'm gonna. Pick my motion then, that we also assist, uh, the, uh, New Vision slash, uh, Joseph Pantry on Meadow with, uh, ten thousand dollars as well, um, so that they can distribute food to the poor and the elderly.
Go on down first. The volume is a second. Not heard.
I didn't hear, you did it, I'm sorry.
Oh, so my, my motion is also assist, um, uh, Pastor Lucy, everybody knows her as Pastor Lucy. She runs a, um, tree called Joseph Pantry. And, um, and she also, she's been a business, we're helping the city out, as you know, with your body over the years. Um, and she has a vision, uh, uh, pantry there on Meadow.
And I'm, I'll second, I'll second the motion. And she's, I mean, she also has a pantry downtown and takes food to, to the citizens of Hamilton and the White House downtown.
I have a question, uh, in, in these two offices, does the, do the office sell the food to the people or they don't?
They give it away. Both, both the regional and the, uh, the Joseph Pantry, they give food away, they don't sell it.
Well, well, now, Georgia, I, I'll make a correction, they do, they do have a store, but they, they have two programs. One is their store, and that store, uh, they have, they have providers that give them food, and they sell that. But they also have a program where they, they deliver food to seniors. And so that's what, that's, as I understood your motion, that would be the program that we would be donating to, to the program to, to, where they donate food and they give food to seniors.
That's the one, Mr. Vali, that's incorrect.
The, the store, they, they have their own suppliers.
Right.
They have their suppliers for that.
Yeah, so, yeah, just as a program that gives it away, yeah.
And with that, kind of occasion, that's all, they don't charge, they don't collect money for the food if that's, that's gonna be, uh, bought with the ten thousand dollars, uh.
Not just stuff they give away, Mr. Mayor, no, sir.
Okay, uh, call for the question. All of the members, say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Your phone? Not heard, voting carries, publicly.
Mayor, I have another motion, um, the South Texas Food Bank is also helping, and they've already helped them once, um, but their numbers are way forward than the, uh, food bank, they just.
You are?
They deliver eight hundred thousand pounds of food to people, have helped eleven thousand, three hundred sixteen families. And they're, they actually managed their, their warehouse, they were the first entity that actually reached out to the city and say, we're ready for this, how can we help? And we're trying to get this going. Um, twenty-five thousand dollars gets only one trader of, of food, um, for one specific item. So, I'd like to make the inclusion that we provide the South Texas Food Bank with one hundred thousand dollars for the month of April. Keep in mind, this is reimbursable seventy-five percent. So, we'd only be considering twenty-five thousand, hoping that we get the federal FEMA, um, reimbursement.
Thank you.
Motion, a second.
Discussion.
Yes, the city manager, uh, I tell you, right, here for the manager first, go on.
Yeah, I, we understand what, what the, what the motion is, but that's with, with the expectation that we will get seventy-five percent back. Would the council be willing to commit just the twenty-five thousand so that if in case this is not reimbursable, uh, we are not looking at a seventy-five thousand dollar shortfall? And then take this as we need? We will have other council meetings, uh, to address this, but that, that would be my suggestion.
We're gonna start by, by following the plan that we're gonna, you know, and out, uh, this is.
I agree with council member, because I think we put earmarks these, uh, fines as well, so we're, this, and we're, because these are essentials. And if we have to, uh, help, I, to find items from the budget from other areas, we are, we are.
Right, no, and, and I think that with the need right now, history, if there are proposals, and I hope you bring some on Monday council meeting, if we have to start getting different areas to balance this off, I think that right now, priority is providing for constituents, especially those in need. Um, I think the people will understand that operationally, we have to, have to do this. Um, and if, if you propose cuts or stop expenditures in other areas to make this happen and it's not reimbursable for whatever reason, then we take those actions, knowing that we have to make this expenditure. If we take this in, in a case by case basis or weekly, uh, the food is taking weeks to get here. We're not the only community, we're not the only food bank asking for, um, for food supply. Uh, they're, they're asking for help now because whatever they're gonna order tomorrow, um, won't be here till a week or two. So we need to move quick. This is moving too fast and we can't have our committee at the bottom of the list for all these pending orders. So my motion stands. I think we have the support for it to go through. I'd like to quickly make a change to have, um, city personnel free, uh, deep checks tomorrow, um, for all entities. And to also, um, have requirements that entities receiving funds, fund from us, which would be South Texas Food Bank, Regional Food and the Pantry, um, to also, um, restrain the funds for the purchase of food items and that they provide as backup the purchase orders and receipt of the food purchased in the city of Laredo so that we can have a council benefit.
Thank you.
Second, yes. Discussion.
Yeah, discussion. Um, look, I, 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 I agree with the manager in the sense that we don't know if we're gonna get reimbursed. And, and so, you know, taking a greater approach seems like the right thing to do, but our problem is upon us now. And so, um, Mayor Potem's, um, solution is something where we inject money, um, the citizens' money back into the community. It isn't like we're using our money. This is the citizens' money. And our responsibility is to feed our community right now in times of crisis. So as much as I understand that we have to, we have to deal with budget constraints, I think this council is gonna have to make incredible and heroic decisions when it comes to the budget. And it's something that I think most council members are very deeply aware of. Because if everybody else has to tighten our belts, we have to tighten our belts. But what we can't do is let our citizens starve. And so, Mayor Potem, you have my full support on it.
So, Mayor.
Thank you, Doctor.
Mayor, so all I'm suggesting, uh, move forward. If we can challenge other agencies, other community members, and even our private sector, whoever also has abilities, to please join us in this endeavor. And, and because it's a community-wide effort as well, so we, we'll make our part. We'll follow council's directive for sure. We're, we're, we're more than wanting to do this, but we also challenge people forward as well. I know there's a lot of people asking us how they can help. This is one aspect that I think where everybody can pitch in.
And, and Mayor, Mayor, um, one thing, in, in about three or four phone calls, we've been able to raise extra money for the food banks. And so this is a, that all citizens have to step in. I know I've already donated and I'm asking everybody. You can. There are people that aren't as fortunate as the rest of us that need help. And those are the, the vulnerable populations that we all have to rally around right now.
Thank you, Doctor Martinez, just, just to mention as a mayor, uh, three calls together, I mean, phone calls, and we were able to raise some money about a week or two ago for, for several entities. So, um, thank you, Doctor Martinez, as well for your efforts and, and also the mayor in, in helping us accomplish what we have.
Thank you. The call for the question, as amended, as, as presented, uh, call for the favor say aye.
Aye.
Call it. Yes, uh, first, voting carries, please. Any other business?
Uh, one more.
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, and going along with what councilmember Rado was mentioning, I mean, that we earmark the, the fines for, that, uh, come through these COVID nineteen measures uh, for emergency supplies. It could be food, mask, or whatever, it's emergency.
So that, 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 that fines are collected as a result of the COVID nineteen, they should be directed toward.
Emergency supplies.
Emergency supplies, medical, food, whatever.
So we can, like, a quarter to five?
And, yeah.
Run.
Okay. For discussion.
Second, uh, the favor, yes.
So would, would you consider, I'm sorry, yeah, so I, I. Uh, so, councilman, yeah, so would you, would you say that we use those funds to make up what we've already, uh, given to these nonprofits or you're saying to continue?
Whatever.
Well, I think that we need to be prepared, just like we've had, you know, hurricanes and different emergencies. We don't have anything prepared. We're always trying to take away from that. And so if we're gonna be having these fines and there's earmarks for emergency supplies, then it might be right now for the food, it might be that medical or ventilators or things like masks that we need to buy. Or maybe the people, you know, to continue, uh, yeah, for the doctor.
Beyond COVID nineteen, or if, if they survive, these money, if they survive COVID nineteen.
So for COVID nineteen relief, and you saw that market for COVID, for this, what, what, for emergency, to be honest, like, oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
So we continue to hear that there's gonna be a spike or something, you provide a, like, a, 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 I agree.
Okay, so, uh, call for the question. Call for the favor, say aye.
Aye.
And vote. Not heard, voting carries, please. Thank you.
Mayor, I've got another, um, did you answer your comments you made? And, and I think maybe that's better legal and diet here. Um, I don't know if my colleagues have received any phone calls from those employees that work for essential businesses, especially the manufacturing businesses, the warehouses. Uh, but I had a call, uh, this week, uh, regarding them working, it, it's kind of the same scenario that councilmember began my game on the restaurant. Uh, there's employees working in certain warehouses that are, there's about fifty of them, practically the difference. And the requirement of the mask and gloves is, is available. If, uh, and there's employees that are telling us, ex, uh, employee, and I'm talking about the private sector only here, obviously not the, um, essential government, um, entities or, um, first responders, um, or law enforcement, but there's employees saying, I'm exposed. I have to come to work because we're essential. If I don't go after I got exposed, I lose my job. And what happens after the, um, the COVID nineteen, when everything comes back normal and there's bills to pay? I was going to suggest that we give these employees the au, the option that if they feel that they're exposed because of the unavailability of gloves or masks, um, by the employer, that they be able to take leave without paying and that their job be protected, um, due to this emergency order. Um, and that these business owners be fined, um, for each employee that he or she terminated for the employee taking a precautionary measure of wanting to shelter at home or, or stay at home because they currently do not have that option. Now, we're referring to not medical personnel, not law enforcement, not government, but those, um, warehouses that continue to, employee would be leaving without paying. Their job would be protected and if the employer terminates them, they'd be fined by each employee that they terminate for wanting to take that individual precautionary measure. Um, I'm giving it up to discussion. I don't know if this is something, you know, that I came up with, or you think it's a good idea.
Mayor. Yeah, hold, yeah. First of all, Rudy, what's that? That's a great question.
So, like, you said, oh, if they terminate it, they'll get fined. So they get, they can get terminated.
No, uh, still, if I was telling you, is, uh, you say that, that.
Not that they're terminated, but still get fined because of.
No, if they terminate.
If they're terminated, they get fined. So the order would protect their employment. The employer wouldn't have to pay them. But if they say, I'm no longer going, I'm gonna go under this emergency order that the mayor signs to protect my family, um, they don't get paid. They're dead or in the duration of the order. If the employer terminates them, they can fine for each employee they terminate for not allowing them to take self-procautionary measures.
Okay, Mayor, wait a minute. Can you consider, I mean, that's a, that's a great field. I mean, a lot of people have the concern of not going out. They do wanna, uh, self-quarantine and stuff. They do wanna stay home. But, uh, can you do it as reasonable as, uh, the amount that the loss is, uh, regardless of whatever the amount?
I agree with that, but I want the amount.
Can I, can I say something that, let me just.
We need legal. Can we get legal to, to speak, please?
Yes, they're legal.
Just that the only businesses that should be open are those considered, um, essential to the infrastructure and the safety of the United States. And those are expected and have a responsibility to keep regular hours. So we would not be able to allow them to not go to work except for reasons that are specifically allowed. And, um, I know that the Labor, um, Department did impose certain restrictions if, as such as if they're sick and, um, if they have a child at home. There are restrictions and there are allowances. Um, I don't know if, um, the HR director can speak to this. But aside from those, they are expected to go to work and they actually have a responsibility because they're considered essential.
If I may, I think that we will be, uh, it will be counterproductive because then a lot of the central, uh, businesses will be to that employees. Everybody has this concern. If I don't have to, I wouldn't go, uh, to work. But if you're not gonna get paid and we're guaranteed, how come we're gonna be that restricted with the private sector so hard, probably gonna be able to pay? And then we're, we're not gonna be able to have the essential workers. And, and then, like, this could be example with us, with the city. If everybody were to do that, then the city could not function.
No, no, but, but my, my discussion was the, we're including government and if you're including.
Well, it's essential. So let's give ourselves the same, say that, that the comparison I'm trying to make, since we're both essential. And if people start having this, you know, um, exception to the rule, then they're not gonna have the essential workers there. And so the, the concern here is, is also that, um, uh, if it will be, not so much, uh, we cannot guarantee that don't terminate or you're gonna be fined. I think it's a little bit, thank you. Um, so it goes with my.
But we do report, but also do, uh, you know, this, this mask, this ordinance, uh, that we're, that we just have not been, once you leave your home, the way I understood it is you should be wearing some sort of cover on the public from where you work, you know, wherever you go, uh, outside of the house.
That, that would cover them.
Including children, remember.
Yep.
One, one thing, and I know I had such base on this with that, with that, um, but you know, it's, uh, I heard those people that are, that are working under these conditions to report it. And that was a concern that was mine also, the warehouses. And I think what they've been doing is, is doing different divisions so that in every, uh, division, there's only up to ten people so that they can, uh, face out their employees, so they're able to report any unsafe, uh, measures that, that may not be followed in accordance with our, our restrictions.
Okay, so there's really no motion again.
No, no motion. It was just a thought, you know, to hear what the all thoughts, so no motion.
Okay, and then.
Mayor, Mayor, Master, here. You know, so, so I, I've seen that we've been, um, I, I, I think this council has tried to do everything possible to try to protect and safeguard the citizens. And I, and I think, um, I'm really proud of each and every one of us. And I don't know if it, it's too early to start thinking about this, but, but we do need to start figuring out how we're going to recover economically from this because this is a tremendous hit, um, for our city. Um, and, and, um, we have to start laying out the framework of what we can do, um, as, as citizens, uh, individually, but also as a community. And so several things come to mind. And I, I don't have a motion right now, but I'm gonna talk about a couple of things very quickly. One is.
Wait, hold, yeah, hold, yes, uh, uh, is that, the, the agenda, after that, uh, council, uh, the legal?
If not, we'll bring it back. It's no problem. But I think a lot of those things are ways that I'm not.
Any action?
And that's gonna take it, can it drop us, uh, and run all of that, the point? Yeah. Okay.
I, I have a, so I'm starting, uh, from some of my accomplishments, uh, that, from things. And I, I think for clarification, I, I, uh, should, uh, talk about this with our, our friend, Ms. Hell. And the order of the government, uh, exclude people from visiting gyms. But I don't think we are, uh, they're not included from doing their classes online or, or having their, their people that are resident members is from getting classes online. Because then that will also be, be their, their first amendment, right? So I think one is that for clarification, that the only, this governor order has is for visiting gyms. So if I wanted to, and for like the recording, I said, and another group were allowing the spacing of the six feet between me and the school that they're recording, then that should be okay. Is that your understanding, yeah?
Yes, um, the governor's order and the executive order allows, um, businesses that are not essential to operate by technology. So if a business owner wants to go to perform minimum operations such as, um, performing that technology, that's, that's acceptable. But the, the businesses themselves are closed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Potem, I, I, I still hadn't, I hadn't shared, um, if I could be heard.
Are you gonna make a motion to, 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 uh?
I mean, what if I make a motion to reconsiderate that they're allowed to either, or, or, or send out a memo to ED or?
Well, we, we, we need to do that for the day. We've said, uh, we're doing, uh, what was this time, or, or, is it right now that they can continue working through, uh, technology?
Yeah, they can operate by technology or, or however, um, distance, whatever allows them to do.
Because we use that language in our order amendments, that not essential business might continue to operate by technology if, as long as they, uh, observe this.
Second, okay, we have a motion. By councilmember, I stand by councilmember, they don't believe it. Any discussions?
We, we have it in, Mayor, we have that already, that language already. Uh, we're, we're glad to clarify, but we believe it's already in the order itself.
It's, it's called minimum operations and that will include it.
Well, just to make it on the motion, just to clarify that, uh, it is being enforced and they, there is being allowed, so they drop or via, uh, internet or via live stream.
Any further discussion? If there's no further, the, the call for the question. All of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of both, say something, motion carries. Any other business?
Uh, the same thing, uh, Mayor Potem, if I may, I, I, on economic recovery, whether this would be an opportunity for us to, um, look at forming some sort of committee from our business leaders, uh, to try to figure out how we can incentivize our economic recovery going forward.
Uh, I guess we defer, we'll defer that question to Ms. Patel. Ms. Patel, does the language of the agenda allow us to proceed with the proposal councilmember, Dr. Martinez, is making?
Um, you can discuss it, but action, I would not recommend it because it has to do with the ordinance itself and amending it and the disaster declaration.
Mayor.
You just, that's, that's fine. I, I, that's fine. I'm not making, I won't make a motion, but can we bring it for the, um, meeting? Can you bring that as an item for re-management with mine?
Mayor, if I can already, just for clarif- for clarification, uh, sake, we, we have already, and we'll bring the, the detail to you. But we have that working committee already that consists of our Economic Development Department, uh, our Workforce, uh, Development, uh, este, Rogelio Trevino, Mile One, EDC, all of those groups, uh, are already, uh, formed as a task force. But we'll bring you a big report. We've already started that discussion. I haven't, it's up to the video.
We need, we need business leaders in this. We need, we need business leaders. We don't need Mile One. We need business leaders.
Correct, but.
Okay, so we're, we're recognizing councilmember, not again, ma.
Yes, I would like to add to that, uh, as a matter of fact, this Thursday, at ten thirty, uh, we are having a meeting with the EDC. We talked about thirty, uh, business members and, and leaders of the community in different areas, uh, of the, of the economy that is, that is, regarding this economic development, um, you know, the plan to, they can be, we call the plan that we need to start working on. And a lot of the, the people that I mentioned right now are there, as well as, uh, a lot of the, the board members from, uh, all the areas in, uh, in town. So I think that, uh, with time already with the EDC, and I know that, that who's there as well, he works very closely with them, so that we can start on our basic economic development, big, big.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, on the, regarding the genative. Could you vote on it?
We voted.
We did? Alright, my, my, I thought it was an amendment. He was operating a check, we do. Joe, Mr. Oden.
Yes. Yes.
Can we vote on the genmupsten?
Yes, uh, do you wanna clarify with the technology?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did vote on that.
Yes. I have it marked on the.
Alright. I'd like to recognize councilmember Al Gil. Do you have a course, sir?
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Um, I was, I know we've got a lot of non-essential personnel working from home. Um, and I know that from, uh, my constituents and perhaps even some of Gulf constituents, I'm hearing that, you know, they call the health department, uh, they call the hotline, they call three-one-one. And, um, they're being told, yeah, we'll get back to you. And ultimately, um, no one gets back to them. I have the sense that, um, that, you know, we were all frankly overwhelmed, um, and I'm wondering if, uh, it would be a good idea so to cross-train these non-essential personnel so that they can also be fielding phone calls, uh, from home and directing people to, um, uh, services or being able to at least ask the right questions so that we can be followed, so that we can be following up with our. to um uh services or being able to at least ask the right questions so that we can be followed, so that we can be following up with our with our constituents. Because I understand there's a lot of folks that, you know, they're getting pretty anxious about what's what's going on, um, and and it's that generally that fear of the unknown that kinda has everybody spooked. And if we've got non-essential personnel um getting paid to stay home, um, why not repurpose them uh to give a hand um so that we can give people the information they need so that they're not overwhelming on our, um, you know, medical resources or so that they are being able to be steered in the right direction for whatever is popping up. So um I'd like to hear from uh management with regard to uh whether or not that's something that should be making use of at this time, these non-essential personnel.
Yes, no, thank you.
Who's agreeing?
Yes, thank you, so, yeah, we we ran with that idea for sure, and and we've further extended that into non-essential personnel at the county. They offered bodies and we've taken them in, they've been a great support, uh, so we are repurposing individuals and realigning our 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 people to help out. We just need to make sure that we have a well-trained uh person taking those calls because that that would be our problem as well to make sure that they're going out there with the right information. And but we'll, we're making use of every available resource that we have with that same idea, so we're following, we're tracking the same way you are.
Okay, great, well then, I'm I'm just gonna go ahead and put that in a motion, make sure y'all got plenty of of leeway and room there. Um, the motion is to um uh allow the city manager to uh make use of non-essential personnel depending on 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 the need and to be able to cross-train said personnel for the purposes of facilitating uh three one one calls, um, other departments and the healthcare department.
There's a motion and a second, any discussions?
Can we hear from the H R? The also in the senate for just then cross-training, do something else, or what is?
I I.
Council member, they is requesting, um, that we could hear from human resources, are they available to answer this question?
I can help answer.
Go ahead.
So we, um, I can tell you right now that so far there's been forty-six employees that have been cross-trained that were considered non-essential personnel. So right now forty-six and that's just with city of Laredo employees, that's not counting with the county at this point.
So to also answer the question too, if I can add, what I can as as city manager also, I can realign those those human resources as well as long as we are not putting them in a higher grade than they're currently operating in. So uh that's the only consideration that we have to make, and then civil service is a whole other uh issue, but uh to start already, we we are doing that and and we'll do a little bit more than than what we're currently doing.
Okay, so, um, did everybody get the motion proposed by council member Al Gil? If so, you want to go to her again?
Yeah, what was the motion we prepared, I mean, management's already doing it.
Mr. Andres, please repeat the motion for the record.
I will try, it's a motion to allow management to use non-essential personnel to cross-train and to be able to answer any questions regarding any of the uh the issues that are coming up, uh, that come in.
But Mayor, that's that's already a charter allowance, I can do that as as manager to begin with, so I I don't I don't necessarily need any motion and and we're already doing this. We appreciate it though, but uh I've already taken action on this matter.
I just don't want, we just don't want um um there to be, um, I mean, we're paying people to stay home. Uh, we would like to encourage management uh to do what they already have the ability to do, which is to repurpose the staff members as it relates to um assisting three one one, other departments, and uh to help health department because I'm getting calls that the health department is not getting back to them in a timely manner. And so I know you already have discretion to do it, um, the the motion is simply to encourage you to make use of these personnel uh even more. Um, it uh, you know, it doesn't, you know, doesn't, you know, it's just, you know, make make use of what we got, you know, we're at, we're, we haven't even hit the apex of this thing yet. And so uh if we're not planning for the apex, then we're failing, and so I'm hoping to give you encouragement and every tool you can in your toolbox so that you can continue to plot a course of preparation for the, you know, impending apex.
Councilman, this is Dr. Gonzalez, uh, director of your health department, um, I, you know, if if someone is saying that they they need to call our regular number because a lot of folks are saying that because they don't like what they hear. Uh, but we're answering every single question of the fifteen operators that we have on the hotline have a script, and when it goes beyond that.
Fifteen operators for a population of three hundred thousand.
Yeah, but they're rotating, and so they're answering the call twenty-four seven, and we we respond when there's a question out of what they can answer. And some of it is related to health issues, then those those we have to answer from the health department.
I'm getting some phone calls that people don't like what they're hearing, I'm, the phone call I'm getting is that they're not getting a call back. They're getting a, I can't answer that question right now, let me get back to you, and then they're not getting a call back. Uh, one of these was some folks from uh some some some, a clinic who said the same thing, they were looking for like Johnny on the spot. I need to know right now, I got somebody outside of my clinic, what do I do? Somebody to direct me, um, and and they're not getting through, and I think there's only fifteen operators right now, um, is is kind of you've 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 said it all. I mean, you don't need to say anything else, there's fifteen operators for a population of three hundred, and I realize you're rotating them out in shifts, but fifteen at any one time. In my estimation, seems like uh we don't have enough, so um I think we should, we should be cross-trained and staffing very aggressively. Um, these non-essential personnel are being paid to stay home so that we can get them uh ready to rock in anticipation of what we all know, uh, God forbid, uh, is around the turn.
Councilmember, so just to be clear, also do these fifteen are on the hotline, this is not three one one, this is not two one one, nine one one, seven nine five twenty-eight hundred, those are all other call takers. So we're specifically talking, those fifteen are on that hotline number, that one number, but we have a a whole host of people that are answering twenty-four seven on three one one that are answering nine one one, that are answering seven nine five twenty-eight hundred, and just city hall customers and questions as well, so just, and P D as well. So please understand that when we mention fifteen, it's not fifteen for three hundred thousand folks, it's fifteen for that one line at any one time. This is not the only hotline available, and let's not forget the resources state puts out for us too, two one one. They answer twenty-four seven, call statewide information as well, so let's, I wanna be, I wanna make sure that our citizens understand as well that we don't have fifteen people dealing with three hundred thousand folks, that 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 we wanna make sure that that is not the case. We're gonna increase the numbers in the rotation cycle, uh, but but to be clear, it's not just fifteen people for just our entire community, I I just wanna make that clear.
Mayor Prontem, Matt, here, just quickly.
Uh, Dr. Martinez, I do have council member Macuio Martinez, I'll keep him.
Of course, sir, no problem, I I can't see the room, I apologize.
I am uncomfortable in the path that we're taking here when it comes to personnel. Uh, I believe that management is is already on top of this, I think they're re-rerouting some of the employees already. We're walking that fine line of uh micro-management, and I do not, I I wasn't elected to micro-manage, I was elected to make the hard decisions. And I think we're going down that slippery slope, so uh I just like to leave it alone with management to manage the city and manage their employees and 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 I don't think we need to be going down this path.
Any other discussion, I I'm sorry, Dr. Martinez, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, sir, um, I I I do wanna say, I'm gonna read something real quick, because I I I don't, I'm not trying, uh, at at least from my perspective, I I'm not trying to micromanage. So, um, I I just wanna read this, just so that people are aware, that we're dealing with a significant number of people that are concerned in our community, right? So, uh, and 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 people are are worried and they don't know, and and so, and and we're we're slowly getting information, and really rapidly getting information out to people. But this is just a a real simple taste of what I got. Um, this is from one of one of the people that I work with, the first time I called, they said, go get a strep, influenza and test that tray. And then those come out negative, and something shows on a net tray, call us back. So I go and I do that, I call back and tell them what shows, she then give me another number to a laboratory number, I guess, where they were have, where they have kit. I call that number and they tell, and tell them everything, where she had a negative strep, negative influenza, and a positive test that tray. Then she goes, I'm with another person, leave me your name and number, and I'll call you back, an hour and a half later, no call. So I called them back, I explained to them what could happen again, and that they were supposed to call me back, and that they never did. She said, ma'am, we're backed up on returning calls, we'll get back to you soon, a day later, still no call back. So imagine all those other people that might not have, uh, that would have it, and they're not paying attention. In other words, we, I think everybody's overwhelmed, not just us, I I I I think everybody is. And and I think the the citizens are concerned because they didn't have enough resources, that's not to say people aren't trying, just that if if we can try to help people uh or help management, whether they're already doing it or not, by by telling them, hey guys, you can retrain to get people's questions answered. I I I think uh that that's a, that's a positive thing, not a negative thing, because people are worried and they don't have enough information.
But, thank you, Mayor, but again, I just wanna be clear, I, we hear you, I hear you as a manager, if you're, if we're talking about resource allocation, we're gonna get it done. Uh, we'll deploy it, and and we know how to do this, we've gone through emergencies before, not as this extensive, obviously, and intensive. But allow us to be able to execute on the plans as well, and and we'll get it done.
I'd like to, I, council member, maybe in line.
Yes, and I hear both sides of the argument, and and I'm thinking, what if I'm uh a story that is not very happy with that directive, where I'm a disgruntled employee and I don't want to comply or be refrained, and I think that by by giving this uh motion, we are giving you a, so, uh, as the the city manager because it's a very uh wide disciplinary motion, like to back you up, and so it's kind of part of, as part of this emergency, which is why uh management has decided to take X Y Z measures, so uh it would be backed up for you as per S M E, employee disciplinary, so things like that, because it's only due to this emergency. But we are not, I think, to a point of of micromanaging, because you guys who have the decision and you've already, by the numbers and by that, by what is, uh, Marina mentioned, you've already been doing it. So it's just to back you up on on that decision with more legal authority so that any employee will not have complaints with that there, the redistribution of the directives for all the, for what they are supposed to be doing.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Prontem, uh, let me, am I going to draw my motion and uh impose another motion? Motion is to direct management to um repurpose any and all non-essential personnel to address the specific concerns that Dr. Martinez just brought up by the deficiencies that the health department in not returning phone calls promptly and providing the requisite amount of attention to these pressing uh health matters, that is my motion.
Councilmember, again.
I'll second.
Councilmember, maybe Guillermo, um, I'd like to recognize Mr. Eats, I think you're trying to commit something to us.
No, I I I I heard, and again, we'll we'll take the directive, I understand it, I I understood it, and we'll, we'll again, we'll repurpose the people as as needed so we can get more people on the line, more people helping uh our community.
All right, so we have consent and a second, further discussion?
Mayor Prontem, just so you know, just so you know, only a hundred and seventy-four calls came in yesterday, every single one was answered. We had people uh waiting to to get calls, so we are answering and we will get back to them. Uh, and as the city manager said, if we need to get more people, we will, but there's also others answering phones uh as well. And so it's not just just the hotline, there there are others as well, we have a mental health one that we coordinated with the with the school district. So we will get back, but the numbers have drastically gone down.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all open favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Next to vote, same time, we have council member Macuio Martinez and council member Villalobales voting nay. Um, and we, since since we're in this webcam and for us to have a proper vote, I guess we'll do it by district.
Roll call. Simple math, that doesn't, doesn't carry, just by simple math.
Well, uh, I I don't know, because we also have council member Bali on the on the call, and I don't know who he's voting. So for purposes of the record, um, District One, Rudy Gonzalez is not present, District Two?
Nay.
District Two is nay, District Three?
No.
District Three is no, District Five?
Yes.
District Five is yes, District Six?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
District Eight? District Eight is no vote, what is the count?
Three two.
Three two, motion fails.
No, motion passed.
No, it fails, you need five votes to pass it, motion fails?
You need five for.
Congratulations.
Uh, Mr. City Secretary, could you clarify the count and uh the if it passed or fails?
You need five.
I have to, you need five for.
So what what is the count, Mr. City Secretary?
You need five to have any action, I don't know.
What is the count for 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 this vote?
It fails.
It fails, all right, any other business?
Uh, real quick.
I would like to act on a vote change, I'm in favor of the.
Mister, council member Al Gil, um, if you could please give me a couple of seconds, I know, um, our city manager wants to men, uh, say something to us, Mr. Eats, go ahead.
So just here, that was on our testing, uh, but as long as we can have our quick discussion, have to do the rapid testing, have the quick actions more before we end.
Okay.
What do you want to see?
Yes, sir, um, so what we'll do is, let's finish any other amendments on the actual order, and then we will leave the discussion of the rapid testing till the end of the meeting. Uh, Mister, uh, council member Al Gil, be on the floor.
Yes, sir, uh, I move that we um direct staff to form a medical uh strike force in order to be able to assess the collective amount of medical personnel, the amount of um personal protective equipment, the amount of uh heads, I T U. Uh, and that we are able, so that we are able to do what they're doing in New York City, which is to distribute uh those who uh need a, to be intubated or a respirator or the otherwise needing medical resources, that we're able to just spread those out across the city. Because we also don't need to play one plate at the same time, we also just need to know how many um doctor's offices are still operational, how many have shut down, as we understand. Uh, several have shut down, um, I'd like for us to also have an understanding on how many, um, uh, you know, uh, nursing students, uh, nurses, P A's, and D's, and et cetera. And so, um, I know we already have a a medical task force that's inviting, um, the uh health department, but here what I'm asking for is something that is uh the state of New York grade of a of a medical uh strike force that that's going to help us ahead of the curve better allocate resources across the health service industry so that we don't end up just flooding one or two facilities all at the same time. Also, uh, so we need to have this strike force, medical strike force team that consists, um, as it relates to the deployment of additional uh resources like uh making use of the uh uh the the uh competent hospital facility if necessary.
That's me, my man. Man, or member of the council?
So, uh, we have, we, hold on, was that a motion, Councilmember Alguilt? So we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Bielma, discussion, I'd like to recognize Dr. Gonzalez and management.
Uh, Member Can, Member Vazco, as the Director of the Health Department, that exactly was the task force you're still in and subject of the vision across the nation, with the medical society, where we're committed as well. But the convenience on it, we have the Inspector Disease Specialist, Doctor Fernando Sanchez, uh, on it as well. The hospital is there, the, the community health center is there. Our hospital's preparedness program, the key to inventory, exactly what the councilman says. Because every day, the standard check, the inventory check. We send, uh, truly, we request, our request to the Health Department, Emergency Management, based on the inventory that we have. The hospitals right now are, already have developed different plans to address any surge, prominent disease for us already, but this study, the committee, looking at the best options, already decided to address all of the independent DRs. And Doctor Rafa Ropera became a member of that team, along with others. And we picked up another safety bed. So everything that, that the councilment says about the basic capacity, the limited capacity, the staff right now, uh, uh, chief doctor from bar department, resident, having his room, already met with the nursing school to see how many nurses are available. We stood up the volunteer nurses from the school district and have a roster already with a plan for them to go to the school nurse and have the hospital nurses who have the technical expertise in isolation and ER. All of this is already a plan that we always have and has been activated. And so all of the medical personnel, uh, have all, all of your responsibilities. We know the inventory, we request the emergency supplies that we needed, both the PVE, ventilators, a call-in up for staff, but exactly as you said, as councilman, the nursing schools have already been contacted, uh, to make sure they come in, uh, he asked, approved by the federal and state order, even before they graduate and, and are not certified. So every component that needs to be there to address inventory, servers, preparedness, response, isolation, how many rooms we have, uh, have already been put in place with each member of the committee, uh, already addressing, uh, exactly what you said.
Great evidence, great evidence. I would just then, uh, state, uh, that my, 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 um, um, amendment, if you will, uh, my motion, if you will, um, that it also includes a neonatologist and, and pediatrician. Um, and then in addition to that, um, that, uh, we be provided, uh, as councilmembers, a, um, a daily report from that medical, um, strike force, so that we know, uh, where we stand in relation to, um, the day ahead.
Okay, so we, we have an amendment, Councilmember Bielma, would you accept the amendment? Okay, as amended, um, and I recognize Councilmember Bielma for more discussion.
Thank you. And I want to thank you, Dr. Gonzalez and Dr. Trevino and all the doctors that are already in that, uh, medical task force, because I know that you guys are already doing a lot of these, uh, you know, steps that we need in preparation. I don't know if within that, um, uh, committee or that group, is there any projection data being done? Because from over here at the national level and CDC, uh, the peak of cases or fatalities is expected within the next two weeks. So we need to see, we, uh, given the trend of what we have so far and any other factors, because of our proximity to Mexico, which, uh, I understand is not taking the precautionary measures, uh, do we have enough capacity and are, are numbers looking good? So I think, uh, that, that'll be the purpose of this, uh, of this initiative, this motion, so that we can all be seeing how we can, uh, assist in that regard or where are, are there any witnesses that we need to be concerned.
Dr. Trevino?
Uh, Mayor Gonzalez, as the President of the Health Department, uh, also just as, as standing, that was one of the question that when we had discussion, that the Trevino for participating, uh, a hundred beds is, or right now projected to increase, uh, at a given time. Again, the, uh, all of the, the standard, uh, emergency rooms were, were stood up as well for that to serve and send the non-isolation respiratory mayors there and use the hospitals that have the, it's a factor to, uh, address the isolation of respiratory issues, as well as doctors just standing up, uh, properly. And so all of that is a motion and the plan is increased, but it's going to be updated from, from then as well. Um, but also from the emergency operations and, and G W that here, all of that has been assessed already and requests have been made already to the emergency management and the equipment has been brought back already, um, and distributed to the hospitals, uh, emergency room, uh, first responders, to make sure we continue to provide the service, the analysis of the P, that's what we're doing right now. Um, Doctor Fernando Sanchez is, is looking at that with us at the Health Department to see what you would see in the next couple of weeks. Uh, where, where is that, where is that analysis right now?
Mayor Can, I, I think that, uh, Nelly, just for a second?
Yes, Dr. Martinez, you're recognized.
Where, where we be, our, our doctors right now is on the front line battling this in their primary care offices, in their hospitals, um, handling patients and patient responsibility. Our physicians in our community are already dealing with things that came down from the state that are changing the way they can practice to begin with. I'm absolutely in, in favor of having rapid response to a state's uptick. But right now, we think that over the course of the last two weeks, we've been seeing, um, Dr. Gonzalez and the Medical Committee, uh, put together a plan, and although it hasn't been presented to us yet, I think they're coming together with a plan that can, um, help us, uh, it hasn't prevented this, uh, increase. And so, and, and I think that will include nurses and student nurses and everything, all hands on deck. And so those are being looked at, Councilmember, just so you're aware. Um, and, and I, I just want you to, want everybody to understand that, that no one is taking those life and, but where we need our doctors is not necessarily reporting to council on a daily basis. What we need our doctors is taking care of patients every single day. Uh, and, 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 and if it needs redirecting some, you know, doctors, they're gonna do that on their own, because eventually, you will see the doctors will rise to the occasion here in this community. Um, so I, I, I have to respect the addition, really, I don't think we need, um, a, a rapid response committee yet. I think we have a medical committee and, and so far, our resources are holding. And we need our doctors on the line taking care of patients, that's, that's my conclusion.
Okay, here's the point, very well taken. And, um, and, and by very well taken, I mean that, um, I'm, I'm comfortable with drawing, uh, my motion, uh, and substituting it with, if we can have the, um, Health Department, then, and, and the, the current medical resources in place right now, and we just report to us that we know how to intelligently respond to our citizens when they say, "Okay, well, you know, how many ventilators are there and how many staff do we have?" And there's only two of the five VR docs in the whole city at a given time. And what, what happens if we, you know, if we, if we go sideways, um, you know, you're not being able to intelligently respond to our constituents? So if we just, um, uh, give some information in that regard from the Health Department and the, um, task force of that, uh, that would be my motion.
Okay, so for purposes of the record, the initial motion was withdrawn. You're now proposing a new motion, do we have a second to that motion? For lack of a second, the motion dies, any other business? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Nelly Bielma. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Yes, uh, in reference to our discussion regarding the restaurants, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, when the Health Department inspectors do their inspection, if they're complying with the COVID restrictions, if they can add that as another field on, uh, what we have already on our webpage, so that people will know that this restaurant passed or didn't pass, uh, the, the COVID, uh, measures. And also to assess a fine in accordance with the, the Class D, uh, that we have been discussing up to a thousand dollars if a restaurant is not in compliance with the requirement of, uh, face mask or gloves.
Second. So there's a motion by Councilmember Bielma, a second by Councilmember Mercurio Martinez. Um, could we just hear from Mrs. Hill on, um, being able to do this?
Yes, pretty much anything in your emergency ordinance will be settled to that fine unless otherwise stated, so that's fine.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, all who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed, same sign. Motion carries, any other business?
Any other, real quick?
Councilmember, Councilmember Rodriguez is recognized.
Real quick, I think it's for legal or management. Are we currently still allowing, uh, residents to use their bicycles and walk in jog up, jog up type?
Yes, Fernando.
I'd like to recognize, um, Mrs. Hill.
We have to know by the executive order of the, um, uh, the governor.
Can we reinforce, I mean, at this point, if we set a curfew that in place, shouldn't we just say, you know what, I mean, at this point, and we just pass for life feeds from gyms? Everybody should just stay inside, even if it's for them?
No, we want to know, it's encouraged and it's required to allow them to, to any type of physical activity outside the number ten to six feet, definitely, that's the purpose.
We just say all day.
Okay, any other business?
Uh, we can exercise, build immunity and immunity immunity at this time.
Any other business, Councilmember Alguilt?
Yes, sir, um, so I've been visiting with our friends at the, um, uh, EDC and, uh, they've brought, they've brought up this issue, um, of the strategy to, um, reach out and to all seamstresses in, in Laredo, um, and to be able to put together, uh, and essentially, you know, like how like Rosie the Riveter showed up during World War II, you know, put together a small army of tanners and seamstresses that can, um, uh, perhaps, uh, create, uh, PPE, um, uh, that's kind of a wide definition, you know, would give, you know, they would basically, you know, get to work in such short supply, uh, with a focus on providing as much as they could, as much equipment as they could to our, um, our, our health providers, because they're the frontline of this fight. And, uh, as I, as the feedback I've been getting from the medical industry is that, um, they're rapidly running out of, uh, personal protective equipment and at some point when they do, they're, they're gonna be forced to close their doors. And so, um, the, uh, I was, so, so in my discussions with Ms., um, Olivia Laela, she, she's saying, "Look, we're gonna unveil this, um, we're gonna need some city support." I don't know what that means yet, um, then, uh, on a side note, I've been approached by, uh, one person who has a 3D printer, uh, and another person who has a CNC plasma, laser plasma, uh, uh, printer. Um, and, and these, the, the two of these individuals are telling me that they can make, you know, big shields, they can make other types of PPE equipment that might be necessary, so that we, um, can keep our, um, our, our health service providers and our first responders healthy and COVID free. And so, um, along those lines, um, just, you know, I'd like, uh, we make a motion or a movement, we're gonna call it to direct management to, uh, reach out to, uh, EDC and, um, coordinate to the extent that we can with them in a way to assist, um, the very talented, uh, seamstresses and tanners that we have in town to create some PPE, uh, in, uh, in an emergency. I know that supplies are in short supply and, um, if we need all the help we can get, if we're gonna get in front of the apex.
Could we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
I have a second by Councilmember Bielma for discussion, any discussion? Councilmember Mercurio, uh, Martha Martinez, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I do, thank you, uh, I, I, Councilmember Alguilt, the, the intent of this would be to kind of go in, in line with what Mayor Protem has said, to try to increase amount of masks that are in our community? Or is this for healthcare professionals, or I, I'm trying to understand this, or?
I think it's for healthcare professionals, uh, for healthcare professionals.
Do those, do those masks, and, and I don't know, I, I, do they have to meet certain standards, certain, um, standards that are universal in, for the CDC and I guess for the Minnesota constituency? Uh, are there specific, uh, standards that are in place that we have to follow and can we follow those? Uh, and number two, uh, if we do decide to go this route, um, how would we disperse those? So that, those are my questions, they're my comments.
Yeah, I'm giving full, you know, ratings on this one to management to figure out those details. I mean, if they could make them, you know, N95, uh, you know, CDC grade, USDA grade, uh, protection, uh, then, then great. I mean, if it turns out that, oh, I mean, you know, the, the, the do it yourself models out there on YouTube or, or junk science, well, then, yeah, you know, switch gear and go somewhere else. But if there, there is a meaningful way to get this done, then let's do it. But I don't explain to you, she's married to a cardiologist and that, you know, every day gets home and says, "Yeah, we're down to very few supplies." And she's worried about him getting sick, she's worried about him coming home and getting the family sick. And she's not wanting to stand around with her denture pocket, she, she's wanting to be creative. Her father, and healthcare, her, you know.
We'd like to recognize little Bali on the, on the other, um, side. Councilmember Roberto Bali, you're recognized.
Uh, yeah, uh, I, I guess one of, you know, one of our things, you know, we passed the previous motion to require everybody wearing face masks, uh, in public. I, I, I assume that our local seamstresses now would be, uh, up to, you know, I, they have more work than they need. They know that the seamstresses are already doing that. And, and then, you know, councilor, you passed, uh, Mary, you passed, uh, um, you know, you make motion, they pass an item to open up the, the factory shop, so that, that's good. But, I mean, to what extent are, are, are the seamstresses gonna, and, and tanner to be able to, to provide more than, more than that? Because now these masks are not available and I'm, I'm gonna require the people there starting tomorrow. And, and in the, in the medical community. And then I think we need to see through those two options. I mean, the first one, all the public to wear, uh, every day, the fact they want to be for, for the medical community as a priority.
Uh, Mrs.?
No, they may be.
Mrs. Hill?
They're not exclusive, it just, it just, uh, the amount of demand that, that we just created is, is pretty impressive. They, they created a mass of about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand masks in one motion.
Mrs. Mrs. Hill? Mrs. Hill?
It's just that, it's just that your face would be, or, it could be a mask, and then it's...
It could be a homemade mask, it could be a piece of cloth.
It could be a scarf, or it could be, it could be a, a bandana, a handkerchief, uh, but everybody needs that on the back. And so, I, I said that most people in the community are not gonna use, uh, how many people are gonna use just a main scarf? Uh, it, it, it just, I mean, it just goes for the, uh, yeah, and I'd like to hear from the doctors, we do all, and all, uh, members of the faculty over there.
I'd like to recognize Doctor, I'd like to recognize Doctor Trevino first and then I'd like to hear from, uh, Doctor Gonzalez.
Can I clarify, what we should know real quick to the point that you brought up?
No, I, I'd like to recognize, um, Doctor Trevino, followed by Doctor Gonzalez.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. On the aspect of the mask, uh, everybody in the family has somebody that has no touch soap. So we can encourage the public to do their own mask, that will, that will prevent a lot of, uh, casualties or somewhere else. Everybody uses some people here that make it all that. I think everybody has somebody that's own a no-touch soap, number one. Number two, the masks are not the hundred percent effective against the coronavirus. So very safe, filter they can...
So various states filter they can put in between the masks. It comes from the 3M filter for air conditioning. That filter can make up a sturdy mask. They need to just take the inside of the filter, and that is the grade to prevent most of the viral particles to go to be inhaled. In regards to the medical support, that was a topic. We are supporting telemedicine yesterday. We had, uh, it was just 100 patients in the past three to four days that we had seen in office through telemedicine. So we'd like to coordinate with Dr. Gonzalez, get this program started at the health department. We aim to have a meeting tomorrow with all the nurse practitioners, and teach them how to install the telemedicine. This would reach a multiple amount of patients and avoid, we don't have the personal equipment, the protection equipment yet, but this would avoid the use of hand shields at this point.
I'd like to recognize Dr. Gonzalez.
Um, everyone, I remember, I remember hundreds of years, and Dr. Trevino said, and Councilman Dr. Montesquik as well. We have an excellent medical community, and they're providing care, they're doing it differently. And Dr. Trevino said, telemedicine, and to the phone or to drive-through. And luckily, the rules, the federal insurance has changed, and now the phone telephone patient is considered face-to-face, and physicians can get reimbursed in public. So medicine is being that different because of this COVID-19 disease, but patients are being seen. Our divisions, we have to thank them for what they're doing at one of their hospitals staff, at the nurses, the respiratory tech, that they're doing a great job. The part of the problem for them, I can tell you, and I really appreciate our city manager, our city city manager, and our participation agent, because they're going now to brokers, because all of our direct manufacturers that we deal with contractually allow, or they're being delayed. And so, we saw now different brokers, and whether the hospital, we've been doing this in a coordinated manner, all of us together. How do all of them support each other? We know that Dr. Hospital just got shipments of N95, and so they're doing well. We're still shooting down in face mask, in glove, and so that's been the bag. But I could tell you that the city participation, as Director of the City Master, ready to take it out, and different brokers will begin to get some of this, and all of that will be shared, because we're all in together. And so, in the meantime, if this person can make for medical that's different than the cloth mask or whatever for the public, the medical community special protection. And so, that has to be a different grade. What EDC has done, then, as long as your N95 that you're using is not damaged, we can sanitize it, they give us data to guide it, and to reuse it. But we prefer and we want our medical personnel protected, yes, to have the new ones every day. And so, with that, we just, we shout to our donation, both at the state and federal level, to help. We have another sort of request to the State Department of Emergency Management as well, to maybe get more PPE, so it's working, I like it, right now. And the reason this stuff, of a corticoid and a hydrocorticoid, we use is, right now, it is allowed for compression and treatment. Trials have already been done, in other areas to use this routine, as well as a natural virus that is used for HIV. So trials have already been done to do the necessary treatment cohorts, to make sure that it's safe, and that it provides the treatment that we need, so that we can approve it, let's say, be done. As well as two different vaccine trials that have been done, separate from education size, but in Texas, court court and hydrocorticoid have been approved for treatment, for compression treatment, where you have a patient that has a lot of options, and so that's already been approved to use. So again, thank you for a medical community, as Dr. Montes said, we need to see patients, the people are seeing not only of COVID, but of other things. And so, if there's even someone who can make medical quality N95, down, Face Shield, send us that information, and both of them.
Yeah, and that's part of my motion. It's not for the home, the citizens. It's so that if we keep, this Rosie the Riveter group would be coming together and work to facilitate personal protective equipment that is standard, the, you know, the federally or USDA or medical standard, if you will. If they can't do it, then, then, no thanks. But if they can't, by agreement, you know, we can take all the help we can get. Mayor Prostem?
Yes, go ahead.
May I be heard with the chief of emergency?
Yes, chief, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to let Mayor Council know that we have already received through Nathan, Nathan Rubio, Steve Ak, two shipments of PPE, and we distributed it, he distributed it to the hospitals and to the different areas, to the police department, fire department. We just recently received another larger shipment that both hospitals are receiving quite a decent amount of PPE. Doesn't mean that more is not necessary, it is. And so, there's still orders, there still are orders. And we, from the city, and from each of those facilities, we do their purchase and processes, they're utilizing that as well. So this is a multi-pronged, for us to first chat first.
Could everyone please mute their... Robert, could you please help us with the echo?
Yeah, it's a multi-pronged motion, and we're working on it. We want you to be assured of that. And there's a lot of stuff happening in the background, you know, there's a lot of operating pieces to this emergency, a lot of different patients, a lot of different committees, we have a kitchen committee, we also have the business sector that is heading out, and we have a medical committee. And so, the only thing I'll ask the Mayor Council is to gather from the balcony, provide us, call us, if you want, but let us work, and then try to get out of the week, let us be the, let us be the operation of this emergency, so that we can do an effective job. Let us manage the people that we have under us, and we'll get through this emergency, holding out to the people all together as our policymakers. Thank you for recognizing me.
Okay, any further discussion? Like to recognize Councilmember Mercilio Martinez.
On the motion, or?
Go on the motion.
Oh, okay, after the motion.
Any further discussion on the motion being proposed?
Is it absolutely necessary to do a motion on this, Councilmember Aldo, can we just direct, do we have to look at this? Because whatever doesn't work out, we have to ungive it, ungive Aldo, but I don't know.
Does that work okay for you, Mr.? Or can we go, yes, sir, say, be careful. Aight, perfect, now we're going on.
Alright, motion has been withdrawn. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Mercilio Martinez.
Okay, so I'm getting all sorts of texts, and this is question regarding the mandate of using masks once you leave the home. What do you do when you arrive to your work? You know, let's say you're a convenience store employee or something out there. So once you're at work, do you continue using your mask, or?
Of course you do, yeah.
Okay. And then, and of course, the other one is, what happens when you're going to be walking, or running, or cycling, or whatever? Use the mask, right?
Mrs. Hill, would you like to clarify that, please?
That's true, it's not, but I mean, that whole motion is what is done with any time we need to know.
To cover everything.
It would seem to make sense if you're not, if you're not, you know, in a group, you know, if you're not, if you're, if you're having social distancing and you're outside, then it would make sense, if you're exercising, that you have a little bit of wiggle room there. I presume, I don't know, maybe, anyone, maybe?
I think, I think that if you leave your household, whether you have social distancing or not, you put on your mask, and if you're going to your place of employment, and your employer's to provide you with a mask to wear, and you already have your own to protect yourself and others, then you have to wear it, because right now they're supposed to, convenience store employees are supposed to be wearing a mask and wearing gloves, as Councilmember Vielma brought up, including those working for McDonald's or any other fast food restaurant. I'd like to recognize Mrs. Hill.
Just, you know, we can have any or protect the public as long as it's necessary as possible, so you can't be any more strict than you need to be. And basically, that needs to be promised on the medical plan. So I think if that's the local health authority says that's not too unnecessary when you're going or in a car or any other type of activity, then it would be acceptable, so.
So for clarification purposes, we'd like to hear from our health authority to clarify and answer the questions that have been brought up. Mr. Trevino? I'm sorry, Dr. Trevino?
Yes, I'd say that it is appropriate to use it in groups or when you're at work, or when you're outside of the house. But when you're completely alone, there's an option to not use it if you are completely alone. Now, how are people going to obey that? That's what the problem is, because we can say, okay, use it when you're within people, and they might forget to use it. So it would be appropriate medically to use it around people in crowds or at work, and it would be appropriate to not use it when you're alone. But how does that make it more difficult to comply? That is the question. So, Mr. Trevino?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Bali.
Yeah, okay, wait. Yeah, what I can say is, I mean, what the doctor's saying, I agree with what the doctor's saying, I mean, at some point, you know, there are businesses that open, people are by themselves, and if somebody walks in and sees you with no mask, are they supposed to report you? I mean, you're by yourself, you put on the mask when you're around people, then you go out running, or cycling, you're supposed to exercise. I'll give you an example. I went running this morning at six in the morning, absolutely nobody, nobody in the street, I was all by myself, I have a four corners to myself. I went running yesterday, I saw one person, right? So what do I, did I get my homemade mask, all sweaty? And just for purpose of taking it when, when common sense dictates that it's six in the morning, a time I call. And so, I understand from the police department, the enforcement part of it, and that I realize that officers would probably see somebody running, and they're not going to pull them over, and they're not wearing a mask, but they could. And so, I think we need to give better direction to the officers, to say, okay, everybody doesn't have to wear a mask. So I came up in the car by myself, I'm the only one in the car, it's just me and my wife, and we live together, we're good people, and we're supposed to both wear masks, and our baby too. And so, we pulled over, we didn't take it for a baby, and for my wife, for me, so we didn't, we have some confidence in this. And so, I don't think that we should be wearing masks, if we're exercising, I don't think we should be wearing masks if we have to social distance. But if we're going out to, you know, to the supermarket, or going out to the mechanic, or going out to any essential business, and then, yeah, we don't want a mask.
So, Councilmember Bali?
Have we distinguished that, and how do we make a possible rule out of that?
Councilmember Bali?
And we passed it, it's a little too extreme, I think.
Okay, Councilmember Bali, would you like to propose a motion, then?
Can we, I'm sorry to interrupt, can we have the motion read back, because I thought we said when they go to essential places to wear the mask?
Right, which is groceries, or work, or?
Yeah, but that wouldn't include jogging or hiking.
Well, that's considered an essential within the activities you can perform, because exercising is essential for your immune system, is what?
Is that a motion?
Councilmember Bali, would you like to make a motion with your proposal?
Uh, yeah, the motion would be that masks are not necessary in the automobile. It might not, in a, as like on a converted public transportation, or a taxi, or Uber, that in your own personal automobile, you don't need to wear the mask. That you don't need to wear the mask for outdoor exercise, if these are activities that you're doing solo, and that you don't need to wear if there's, if there's crosshairs, which you'll be distancing.
I want to add something?
Proper social distancing.
I think it's proper social distancing, and we need to breathe some air too.
Right, I accept it.
You have a mask on all day.
So let's say I go walking.
Alright, so, hold on, hold on, hold on.
When you're working all day, filthy.
Hold on, hold on. So we have a motion by Councilmember Bali, a second by Councilmember Mercilio Martinez. Councilmember Bali, would you like to wrap up your thoughts before we recognize other members for discussion?
Uh, next to it.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Nanny Vielma.
I would just like to offer an amendment to check out the solo, and as long as it's within the required social distancing, just as the example where you were saying, if you go walking, as I did today, go walking with my kids, as long as we're, you know, within social distancing, we wouldn't need the mask.
So, Councilmember Bali, did you hear that?
Yeah, but I think that was part of the motion, that as long as you're within, you're within, you know, proper, proper social distance. And I get that, and I would add, if you're within your shelter group, and Councilmember Vielma, like examples, you're going to walk with the kids, that's your shelter group.
That's your shelter.
And my wife, my baby, that's my shelter group. But we're together, you know, it's sort of pointless. May I throw my hat?
Alright, so, was that an amendment you were offering?
Yeah, on the word solo.
So, Councilmember Bali, would you accept Councilmember Vielma's amendment?
I think that's what they.
What are you, motion, please, sorry?
You repeat it?
Yes, hold on, should we repeat?
Mr. Valdez, we have the motion read back, please.
The motion in general, what I feel here, was motion to exclude mask wearing in your own personal vehicle while exercising, I don't know if it was by yourself, or the exercising in general, and while practicing social distancing.
Okay, yeah, I agree. Yeah, I think what the wording was, while exercising solo, so I wanted to amend moving the solo, so I guess, maybe if you want to add something, Councilmember Bali, the shelter group or household?
I would, I would, I would amend it to include if you're within, right, your shelter, your shelter group.
Right, your shelter group.
Alright, so we have a motion, we have a second. Councilmember Aldo, I think you were waiting to be recognized. You have the floor, sir.
You guys, you guys caught it, it was just, uh, at that point, so yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so, Councilmember, Dr. Martí, you're good?
Mayor Prostem, mad, sir?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, the thing of this social mask law is, when you're going to be in close groups, right, in the last majority of time, you're not going, you're out in public, you know, walking by somebody, if you want to keep six feet, you're not really going to get, your chance of getting an infection varies low. It's when you're going to building, and you're, or you're in crowds, that social distancing becomes a problem. So maintaining social distancing at a big turn is very difficult to do. You know, when you're standing in line at HED, if you're trying to maintain social distancing, but often you're really maintaining social distancing, you're outside, are you really doing it? And so, And so, it, it just within a very vague, where you're trying to say, hey, make, if you're able to maintain social distancing, you don't have a, a mask, that's going to make enforcement really difficult. People are going to take two steps back or three steps back and say, hey, you know what? It's proper social distancing. Either it has to be for real or not for real, either we're going to wear a mask to try to decrease the spread of this disease, or we're not. Now, I understand being inside, I understand exercising at home, in the car, and, and those are common sense things that I think our officers are going to be able to look at. If you're by yourself and you want to give you the directions, if you're going to be by yourself, you don't need it. You know, if you're going to be in a car, you don't need it. If you're going to be, uh, in your house with your family or in a group, with your family, with the people you're with, you don't need it. But, but if you're going to be getting close to a grocery store, you need to wear it. If you're going to be around anywhere, whether it's going to be public, and, and you could potentially be exposed to the pathogens, you need to wear a mask. And I don't know how you word that, but I'm concerned that we're going to open-ended as far as saying just, if you have enough social distancing and you don't have it, to wear a mask. But I think that's a little too open-ended.
Okay, well, uh, may I?
Go ahead, Councilmember Bali.
Yes, sir. Uh, so, I, I, I guess the concern is that, that, uh, when you enter a building, uh, there, there doesn't seem to be any, any big crowds anywhere other than, than, uh, I guess the HEB at, at seven forty-five AM. Uh, but so, I, the... As I understand, what, what you would have is, is you're going to enter, if you're going to enter a building, and, and if you're going to enter someone else's home, or if you're going to enter a, uh, a building with social distancing.
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, that's correct, yes, sir.
If you, if you want to protect people as they're walking through those, uh, and, you know, the social distancing aspect, you want to make sure that people are aware that, if you're going to be protecting somebody, you need to be wearing a mask to protect them.
Maybe, maybe the easier thing is, instead of making all these exceptions, is to say, is to say that, that masks should only be worn if you're going into, if you're going into a building.
Yeah, there is.
And maybe, maybe that's the easier way than, than maybe the common rule of the public areas.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Nelly Vienna.
What we're seeing currently, sometimes people are outside the building, waiting outside HEB, and, and if they're in line, they're not wearing a mask, that's going to be a concern. I think the clarification here, when, when Councilmember Bali, uh, mentioned, uh, with adequate social distancing, was referring to exer, while exercising. So at first he said, if I'm solo and I'm running, like, I don't have to be worried about anybody else. And what I was explaining, if you're exercising with your family, with your kids, then as long as you have enough social distance, then you should be okay, or with a group. Or just probably some exercising, or just, they don't work.
All right, so what are the wishes of council? We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion?
The amendment, if you're going into buildings, that would be the amendment. In going into buildings, it would be accepted or any, uh, any area where social distancing may be difficult.
Or when, when you mind going into a building?
I said, in line going to a building where social distancing may be difficult, you have to wear a mask. That, that, that's...
I, I recognize it, again, Councilmember...
Yes, Councilmember Bali, you recognize?
I guess all of this goes back to the original motion that's made. So I, I think it's easier to, to, uh, basically amend the original, the original, uh, uh, original motion that passed. And, and listen, here, if you have to wear a mask, if you're going into, if you're going into a building or you're standing in, in, in line somewhere. That's, that's what you're doing, all of it?
What do you, what do you, the motion that has an amendment, sir?
Well, it would be, it would be to the original, uh, rules that we passed about wearing a mask. You want to say?
Uh, so, who's trying to, to speak? I hear a lot of voices.
Listen, I, I want to be the motion, ma'am.
So I'd like to recognize, I'd like to recognize numbers in the manage, management room. We hear a lot of noise over there. Someone want to be recognized?
Yes, sir. The original motion was to cover your fingers all the time when you leave your house. It was not to put masks all the time.
Yes, well, I, I cover your mask, that's what I'm referring to, but whether it's a mask or a handkerchief or whatever, whatever it is, it's not your hat. Uh, it's essentially a mask. Uh, and, and so the, the point being that, uh, instead of it being at all times, it would just be in when you enter, in, when you're entering into a building or when you're standing in line somewhere.
Councilmember Bali, but how about someone walking from the parking lot into a building and not practicing any protective measures, or, or walking the dog, and sneezing, and, um, leaving droplets, you know, um, anywhere, or simply...
But they're outdoors, they're, they're outdoors, and outdoors by yourself is just pretty a problem.
Okay.
Even if you're sneezing, unless there's somebody, unless, you know, there's somebody next to you.
You grab, but, but, but you can grab, you can grab a grocery cart, sneeze and cough, or have droplets on your hand, and leave them on the cart, um, for the next person to utilize if, if the, um, grocery store is not practicing any sanitary measures.
Well, the grocery store is getting the shopping carts in style and light, from, from what I can, from what I can see, uh, well.
It's like a park, yeah. Yeah, it's not a, uh, yeah, not Walmart, not Walmart, just kitty.
Okay, so...
It, it, we have private, we didn't try that, uh, but, but, uh...
Okay, so, so, okay, okay, can we have some order? Everybody's trying to speak, one atop of another. Uh, let, let, let's do this. Mr. City Secretary, could you repeat the amendment so we can vote on this?
Well, the amendment that was made was, uh, wanting to exclude mask-wearing in your own personal vehicle while exercising by yourself, while practicing social distancing, while in your shelter group.
Is that, is that, is that accurate, um?
Well, yes, and by the way, they were, they were, uh, to, uh, so many, so, uh, they were, they were probably getting out.
Okay, so, so, uh, wait, wait, Councilmember Alguilt. Councilmember Bali, is your motion accurate? As read by the city secretary?
It, it, it is, it is accurate, and what I had thrown out there was that, that perhaps, and that's what I wanted to speak back to the council. The separate made, is to make, you know, instructions to just say, you need to wear it when you're going, when you're going into buildings or, or your home. Um, and, uh, and the only concern that I heard about that, with the, you, Councilmember, is that you think you, you should wear it perhaps from the parking lot into the, into the building or in the street, into the, into the building? And, um, and I didn't hear any other concerns other, other than that. I think I have a face that's a may, may, boy, may, I think, Eric. Um, so, I, you know, the, the, the ordinance should read, or the amendment, or, uh, should read that, um, you know, all citizens are required to keep their nose and mouth, uh, covered when they are going to enter or anticipate entering into a building where there are going to be other humans outside of their shelter group. I think, I, I think, I think that's one way to fix that. The original, to fix the original, uh, rule that we passed about wearing face covering. That's right. Okay, so I, I agree with that, I, I agree that that's the way to go, and so that's, that's my motion, I'll withdraw the other motion, and I'm going to make the, the motion that Councilmember Alguilt just...
All right, so, um, so, Councilmember Bali, could you, could you make, you want to make that motion?
Yeah, that's the motion.
Okay, so, Mr. City Secretary, could you repeat the motion for purposes of the record?
Listening to the record, okay.
And I, and, um, Mr. Bali, I was just saying, I was remiss, um, that if you're going to make use in a public transit facility or, um, or, or in a, I mean, um, that you also be required to, um, cover your nose and mouth, other than your, other than your...
All right, so, Mr. City Secretary, could you...
The only thing is, if social distancing is not possible, even if they're outside, a sneeze can forget to, to other people, or cough can forget to other people. If social distancing is not possible, uh, uh, Councilmember Bali, I, I just think that, that if people are sitting and they start sneezing, if they're even close to other people, it can be a problem. I'm not, I'm not trying to be a baron, I'm telling you, it really can be a problem. So anticipation of going into buildings or areas with social distancing may not be possible. Would be very, I would...
I, I just don't think there's anything, there's anything left. I mean, where, where would you be outdoors right now where there's a crowd? There's, there's nothing left other than going into a building or being, uh, there's, there's, I mean, I just don't see it, the bus is closed, there's no advance anywhere. Uh, indoors or outdoors, there's no crowd anywhere, uh, so, that's why I just, I just don't, I just don't see that.
I, I understand, I understand what you're saying. Uh, I understand, and how, uh, uh, the sort of gas stations and all that would be considered, uh, pumping gas and all that sort of stuff. In my opinion, you, you, when you're on the opposite side of a gas station, you're not taking heat from anybody. You know, and, and so you, you're, you're, you're sixty, what can you know, you're touching this house, or you're stuck, you, you're, you're putting in the numbers to be a gas, and you're in this area where you're going to be by yourself, but you still need, um, to take that measure.
Well, then, I didn't think of that point, I think you, you, that's almost the only exception, is pumping gas, which is required to pump your gas as well.
Uh, Mrs. Hill? Oh, I thought you all wanted to say something. All right, so, um, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
If you define social distancing in the household?
Yes.
All right, so, we have a motion by Councilmember Bali, a second by Councilmember Mercurio Martinez. All those in favor, signify it by saying aye.
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 Okay, so, we're hearing some people are opposed, so we're going to do roll call vote. District one is not here, district two?
Nay.
District two votes nay, district three?
Nay.
Yay? District three votes yea, district five?
Yes.
District five votes yes, district six?
Yea.
Yes or no?
Yes.
District, district six is a yes, district seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
All right, the, the yea, savvied motion passes. Any other business?
Thank you, comrade, motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn by Mercurio, my... Oh, no, um, I, I was just reminded that health is providing us an update on the rapid testing, so, um, your motion to adjourn fails for lack of a second. We'd like to hear from management and the health authorities.
Thank you, uh, yeah, we want to hear what you're looking on this rapid test that we were, uh, supposed to start tomorrow, I want to give it either over to Keith Ivey or to, uh, Dr. Vigo, Dr. Thomas, because this, we have an update, uh, Dr....
Right, in regards to, uh, the COVID-19, uh, the M and I P antibody quick test, uh, we have to discuss, Dr. Gonzalez, myself, about the, um, well, maybe the, uh, not the, but, but about the, um, product that we have to make ourselves, to ensure that this test will be, uh, working for us. It actually FDA approved, uh, or, uh, rapidly approved under the situation like that. But, uh, we, we further investigation, it'll take us a couple of days to do these products. And Dr. Gonzalez has been discussing them, so I'll catch up, forward to him.
Uh, Councilmember, the city, we, we, we want one of the twenty-four hours to, to give us a control, and that, that's pretty standard. Again, uh, we're happy to, to have this, uh, cooperate with, uh, the control. And we have been approached by various members, uh, who are also looking at the rapid test, uh, L S B was, uh, that, uh, is also looking at, uh, a rapid test. Um, and so, I think, all the only ones that had them was, was their choice. And, uh, the agreement, um, was that they wanted a partner, uh, to make sure that, again, everybody's coming into the community. And so, whatever we would purchase, they would match. So we bought twenty-five hundred, they matched forty-five hundred, so we have five thousand. And they're in a cooperative between the city and the county, so both of us, uh, will, will take charge. And so, the product inspector, they have it, has been approved under the Federal Emergency Act. Uh, FDA approved it, all, it, it's all qualified. But we just need, uh, a little more time to do controls, uh, to make sure that we know it may be correctly, and, and the controls are done, and, and they, that's my call. This will be done also with a VCR, when we get our, our VCR, uh, test. Uh, for the health department, it has to go through control and the foundation as well. It's just level standards, and so, although we were ready, you, you, I mean, the picture, the GINA, this, Ravi, and the council, our staff, and head staff, everything is stood up, were, were ready to go. Um, we, we have to look at, at the controls, looking at, and if I don't get the controls, we, we just need a, a little bit more time, and it needs twenty-four hours to, uh, finish the controls, and then, uh, we can, we can go on with the, with the testing.
Uh, Dr. Gonzalez, I have a question, uh, on the tests. Um, could you speak on the reliability of, of these tests? And do, are, are we establishing, um, our own controls? Do they come with controls? What can you tell us about that?
Again, when you might do the evaluation, uh, that requires controls from, uh, the FDA, but through administration, so they're, they're, they're fine, we have this, they're certification. We just need to do local controls as well as the quality assurance, that's just, that's just standard. Um, and so we're, we're hoping to finish back tomorrow, so we can get on, uh, with the, the plan that we know for the drive-through. Uh, it's, it's a pretty detailed, complete test before, uh, for proof, like, for instance, we'll be done drive-through to as many as seven hundred cars, um, in, in a given day. And so, uh, the plan is, is done, the infrastructure is stood up. If you have a bad weather, there's multiple tests for, for, do you think, to drive off at a time? Um, so, when we, the vaccine, again, it has to prove, it has, uh, a diversity between ninety-three and ninety-seven percent. Uh, it is a rapid test, and it's not a confirmatory. Anyone who would think positive, uh, with the rapid test, we have to do a confirmatory, uh, VCR on the regular testing, um, that right now, it is the confirmatory. So we're, we're anxious, we're, we're happy we have the, the rapid test, but we just think it needs one more day to do some, some, some proper controls.
Dr. Gonzalez, could you speak on the percentage of the reliability of these tests?
Ninety-six to ninety-seven percent, Mayor, but that's, it's a specific number, Steve. Uh, so, but it, it isn't confirmatory, Mayor, but we still have to go out and do VCRs. Uh, but we can't actually guide, uh, our decision-making on these tests, because they are ninety-six to ninety-seven percent confident, reliable. Now, Dr. Gonzalez, I hope, uh, that it's accurate.
Yes, that is, that is true. It's, uh, we, we're doing, we're just doing our quality assurance, keeping, and doing all the internal controls.
All right.
That's standard for government, so, since when you do quality controls in any laboratory, you, you get a test, we notice how the quality, um, um, reliability, you have to do neg, you have to test negative, but test positive, you have to test the specificity. In other words, you have to go through all the quality controls and all quality measures to ensure reliability of the test. If all those are done accordingly and correctly, then you can anticipate a ninety-six percent, uh, reliability of the test. And, and that will guide our decision-making when it, when it comes to being able to isolate or quarantine people and make sure the mask matters.
Dr. Martinez, for purposes of the record, for those of you on the phone, um, Councilmember Alguilt, Bali, and Councilmember Dr. Martínez, and for whatever reason you do hang up, please let me know for purposes of a quorum. It's just you three and us two here present, so we have a quorum with the three that are online. If any of the three online do leave or disconnect, please let us know, because we will not have a quorum, all right?
Still here.
Okay.
Here, here.
Sorry, Dr. Martínez, go ahead.
Well, that's it, sir, I, I just think that it is a great first test. The amount of tests we have allows us to make decisions, uh, and, and school, schools, or, or community for stepping up and, and helping us with this, uh, I just... are stepping up and helping us with this, uh, I think it is going to allow us to make aggressive choices going forward, and ultimately, yes, we will opt to confirm these tests, but it allows us a much more rapid, uh, response, that we wouldn't have had anyway. That's it, Chris.
Um, anything, anything else from any of the council members? Anything else from any of the council members before we recognize management? Anything else from any of the other council members? All right, Mister Eads, you have the floor.
Yeah, I do want to say, uh, I do want to thank the council for your patience, we understand, we look, we believe in where people are going, we, we get it, I get it, I think we all do, so believe me, as, as we figure through this, there's been some burning, trying, uh, fifteen days, we're, we're all burning the bin oil, fifteen, eighteen hour days, sometimes, uh, but we, we're getting around it clear, so, so, we told this on the chat, and we're all known for the, the, and, and working at the, the service, uh, the U.S. Council, for our citizens as well, so, uh, we'll continue to do what we got to do, uh, but we, we keep with our voice, thank you.
Okay, and, uh, Mayor Bostak, uh, if that's it, motion to the chairman, if you're requesting it?
All right, so, we have a motion by Councilmember Dr. Marta Martinez to adjourn, do we have a second? I'll second it. I'll second by Councilmember Mercurio Martinez. All those in favor signify it by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries, meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-eight PM. Thank you all.